Good morning and welcome to the Beaufort County Board of Education Work Session. We will now call the meeting back in order for public session. The board just came out of executive session. Today is March 24, 2023. Due to statewide Internet issues, this meeting cannot be livestreamed, and we also cannot be utilizing Board Docs, which records our motions and voting. So our executive assistant to the board and our officer, secretary, are going to both be recording the votes. So it's real important that everyone with their show of hands be very clear how they're voting when we take votes today. Our meeting, however, is being recorded and will be having a delayed broadcast. So unfortunately, these circumstances are out of our control, but we can continue and have our meeting. So do we have any motions coming out of executive session?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Wozniowski.
Thank you. I have one. I move that the board direct the policy committee to revisit Board Policy GC 2.23, Public Comment at Board of Education Meetings. Second.
All right. Motion made by Dr. Wozniowski, second by Ingrid Boatright. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then on the phone, we have Hay and Dallas. Hay, yes?
Yes.
Dallas? Not present. All righty. Do we have any further action as necessary or appropriate coming out of executive session? Madam Secretary?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We now need a motion to approve the agenda. I move we approve the agenda?
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes.
Due to the Internet issues, is there any items on the agenda that we will not be able to cover today? Like that require Internet access or something like that? The only reason I ask is there's that new Board Docs platform community training. I don't know if that is.
Yeah, I would assume that would not be able to be.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I move that we remove the new Board Docs Platform Community Training item from the agenda.
I second that motion.
Now, maybe we should... What I was going to say is could you make the motion so if the... Only if it's not working still at the time you get there? Because it may be fine by the time we get there.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we amend the agenda to make the new Board Docs Platform Community Training item tentative.
Based on Internet access. Okay. All right. Will you second that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right, now any discussion about that? Okay. All in favor of approving the agenda with the modification mentioned? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Not present, still are not voting.
In unanimous.
Yeah, unanimous, exactly. All right. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance). In your own help, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. The media has been properly notified. We have two persons commenting for the public comment session.
Hi, this is Ron. I'm calling you for public comments. I'm going to put you on speakerphone and you'll have three minutes. Please state your... You're naming your topic, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, board members. Dr. Rodriguez, I had intended on having my daughter speak this morning. She wrote a statement. When I looked at the calendar...
Could you please say your name, sir? 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 We need your name and topic.
My name's David Cook.
And your topic.
My topic is the Jimmy Harrison donation.
Thank you.
Okay. The question is, do I need it? Do we need it? Does the school need the Jimmy Harrison donation? Okay, that's the end of my comment. My daughter was going to comment, but I had to put her into school. The board meeting was scheduled according to the calendar for 8:30, and I didn't want to keep her out any longer past 9:15. We thought the board meeting started at nine after we saw the agenda this morning. And I want to ask if I can read your statement. Do I still have a couple of minutes?
No, sir. The comments are limited to the person speaking, and one person cannot yield their time to another.
How much time do I have left in my comments?
One minute.
Good morning, board members. I want to share my experience with you that I believe is the...
Cut him off. He's reading his daughter's statement.
Instead of being...
Ma'am? I mean, sir? I'm sorry, your time is up.
All right. There are no comments in person, Robby?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have debt presentation. Operational expectations 6.9 through 6.17. Brian Nurek, Franny Heizer, Tanya Crosby. Welcome and thank you.
Good morning. Tanya Crosby here, Chief Financial Officer. I'm here this morning to just do a quick introduction of the topic and to our guest today. So this is actually an operational expectation that the board has a set of expectations in your policies to make sure they're informed about the debts of the district, the debt obligations, which we'll be giving us a summary of those today, upcoming bond issues and other board policies, other information regarding board policies that are in place. So this is an annual meeting that we have every year about the same time so that we make sure that we provide all of that information typically in March at this work session and make sure that there are no surprises through from the board's perspective throughout the year. So this evening or this morning, we're going to talk a lot about finances in the first half of today, so I'm glad you're fresh. But we are having some technical difficulties, but I think you all have handouts for every presentation that will be this morning. And so I'd like at this time to introduce Brian Nurek of Compass Municipal Advisors, our financial advisor, and Franny Heizer of Burford Mormon McNair. So I think the... Should we go with yours first and then any follow-up with Franny? Okay?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez, thank you for having me back here. One year and one day ago, I presented Debt Day 2022. So we're at Debt Day 2023. Last evening, I attended my first community meeting in Oakdale Elementary School. And it was a neat experience to see all the parents and contributors talking about Phase II of your potential bond referendum. So we were talking about the numbers and kind of how we've been able to take advantage of low interest rate environments as well. There are... Hopefully, everyone has the handout printed. It's a little bit easier to go through it. So there are 12 pages. They're all numbered at the bottom right, and we will start with page number one. So same as last year, we look on a calendar year of all the bond issues that we expect to issue over the next... By the end of this year. And so the first item, the highlighted item, is in May, we will issue a small bond that's already been approved through the Skago Geo Debt Program. And the proceeds of that will make the payment. That's due June 1st on your installment purchase revenue bonds. So same process as prior years. After that, in June, we will start discussion regarding the 8% program. And we'll work through the placeholders that we have in the cash flow stream here in a moment. And there's another slide that will talk about regarding any additional monies, cash monies that may be available for your discussion when that resolution comes before the board in July. I'm sorry, in June. We will issue the bond in July. And then the third item is the same as the spring issuance through Skago, the fall issuance through Skago makes the December 1st payment on the installment purchase revenue bonds, the same as prior years. And then the last item is the potential as-needed tax anticipation note. And that is a process in which Ms. Crosby will go through your monthly cash flow, and she will determine what your deep point is for cash balances. That's more of a general fund item. That's just a notation that there may or may not be a need for a tax anticipation note. And if there is, it will come to you in the... Around the June timeframe after your budget has been approved. So any questions on the really the three bond issues related to general obligation bonds that are listed and then the tax anticipation note? Okay. We will move on to page two. So we'll talk about credit ratings twice today. So this is a snapshot of all the credit ratings that are available from Moody's Investor Service and Standard &amp; Poor's. So if you look to the far... Two columns to the right, you can see that Moody's Investor Service, their top credit rating is AAA. Then they move to the single A... Sorry, the double A category. And there's three tiers to that category, A1, A2, and A3. Same for single A, and then they move to what they call the BAA category. Now, below BAA, you move into what we call non-investment grade. Okay? So anything that's BAA or higher gets the terminology of investment-grade paper. For Standard &amp; Poor's, it's essentially a mirror, except in the BAA, they call it triple B. And so anything below triple B with Standard &amp; Poor's would be below investment grade. Beaufort County School District enjoys very high credit ratings. So if you see the two red dots, you can see Moody's Investor Service has the underlying credit rating of the school district at a AA1. And also, Standard &amp; Poor's has the underlying credit rating at a AA flat. And as in past years, I've noted that there's only a handful of school districts that even have the AA1 category, including... Or I should say, expanding on that, the State Interset Program, the enhancement program for every school district is rated AA1. So the underlying credit rate of the school district is equal to the entire state's program. So it's just an extremely high rating. And we always make mention every year that the largest factor in keeping that rating where it is is liquidity. So fund balance is a key metric that they have utilized over time to keep you at that AA1 rating. Any questions on credit ratings and where the district stands?
So can you tell the public? What other... There's, I think, 77 approximately, school districts in the state. What other districts have the credit rating as high as ours? And are there any higher?
So Greenville County School District is rated AA1, AA+. And then you would follow them in the number two category. I have not looked at Charleston in a while. They kind of bounce around. But the last time I did a full state ranking, the Beaufort County School District was ranked number two, right behind Greenville. And the difference really is they have a larger industrial base versus a tourism base. That's the only real difference.
I think it's very important for the public to know that. Thank you.
Any questions regarding page two on the credit ratings? Okay.
So Elizabeth and Colton, if you're there, if you would like to speak, just say you have a question, okay? I'll call on you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So page three is from your finance department, and this is an information-only item. So when the 8% program and the bond resolution is brought to the board in the month of June, part of your process is to identify any monies that are remaining from prior 8% programs that have been authorized. So an example is any bid premiums, any interest earnings. If projects came in under budget, those would be accumulated cash amounts that you could apply to the upcoming 8% program that you would approve. So you can see 8.5 million is what your finance department has identified. And also, I think it's very important to note that you have a consultant that makes sure that from a federal tax perspective, when the bond issue is closed out, there's no amount due to the IRS. So it is a little bit of a process to close out or sunset a bond issue.
Okay.
So moving to page four, we're going to get into the debt portfolio. So we call this the debt capsule report. And under column A, we identify all the bond issues that are outstanding for the school district. And then we have some highlighted rows. The gray at the bottom are the three general obligation bonds that identified on that timeline on the first page. Column B is the amount that was originally issued. And then column C is the amount outstanding. Column D is the amount that would be chargeable against the 8% debt limit, which we'll get to in a future slide. So we're managing under column C a $438 million debt portfolio. Okay? So it's a sizable number for us to be working through. And one of the things that we have done throughout the QE or quantitative easing phase is we have refinanced a number of bond issues. So any bond issue under column A that has the REF designation, that stands for refunding. And you can see that in 2021, there is refunding and there's an asterisk. So that particular bond issue is, to me, a little bit of a badge of pride. It goes out to 2034, so when we issued it, it was about a 13-year term. But... And it was taxable. So it was a refunding that required us to issue taxable debt instead of tax-exent debt. But look at the interest rate under column E. It's a 1.51%. So we locked in a 13-year refunding at 1.51%. We obviously could not get that today, right? Because now we are in a quantitative tightening program with the Federal Reserve. But the asterisk is after the bond issue was closed, we approached the bank and we suggested to them that they could offer to the school district the opportunity to refinance the bond again, but at a tax-exent basis when it becomes eligible. That date would be March of 2024. They did the math and they agreed. And the board subsequently passed the resolution accepting the term sheet. And so we hope that in January of 2024, we'll be back to talk about that refinancing and lower the rate again from a 1.51% to a 1.23%. The reason that we wanted to execute that at the time is because facts and circumstances change. Environments change. And I don't think the bank would be willing to do that today. We were in a very different economic climate at that point in time. So I'm very proud of that transaction, and that will result in... I think if my memory serves me correct, about an additional $233,000 of savings net to the school district. So it was a little ingenuative, and I think it's going to produce some good results for you. And then the only other bond issue that we're tracking is highlighted in the light orange, the 2015B. Right now, the refundable portion under column F is 3.7%. We would not be able to get a rate much lower than that today, but as again, facts and circumstances change over time. And in March 2025, we could refinance it on a tax-exent basis. If we wanted to refinance it earlier, it would be on a taxable basis, similar to the bond issue I just described that we did in 2021. So that's really the only bond issue that we're monitoring right now from a future refinancing perspective. I think the takeaway here is from a quantitative easing perspective, we refinanced every bond issue that we could. We also issued the 2022C, $139.6 million, the last installment of the Phase I referendum. We got that issued before rates started creeping up. So that was a good result for the school district. Are there any questions on this page and any of the debt that's outstanding for the school district? Okay. So we'll move to page five. So we take all those bond issues and we break them down into their payments. And we look at it two ways. One, we look at it on a graph, and one, we look at it just in terms of numbers. And the school district has two core programs that you issue either annually or on an as-needed basis. The first is your 8% program, which funds a lot of annual maintenance-type items that are useful life a little shorter in duration. And then we have the referendum program that comes up from time to time on an as-needed basis for more large capital items. And so the first thing we do is we layer in all the existing bonds. And then the second thing we do is we layer in your 8% borrowings and then the future potential Phase II referendum. And when we did the Phase I referendum, the goal and objective was to try and predict what growth rates could be so that we could issue another referendum, but this time without a tax increase. So we planned five years ago, worked with the finance committee very diligently. And as you can see, when we layer in the future 8% program, which would be the light blue bars, and we layer in the Phase II referendum program, which should be the green bars, we stay at 36.3 mils for five years out to 2028. And then we would drop down from there and have potential capacity for a potential Phase III. So we're always trying to think five years out when we're structuring debt to better position the district. So five years ago, we anticipated that there could be a Phase II, and we thought it would be best to have that go to the public without a tax increase. And that's the situation that we are in today. The way that we got there, and it's part of actually your credit rating analysis, is a lot of it rolls through your finance committee. So from the finance committee, I call it the governance side. And then we have the staff side on the administration. And then you have your external consultants, which is myself and Franny Heizer. When all three are working really well, this is the result we get. And so I just want to point that out that we represent about 90% of the school districts in the state. Not everyone has this result. Okay? This is a great result. And hopefully, if Phase II referendum program is forward and is successful, I'll be back here, maybe me, five years from now and talking about a Phase III, potentially without a tax increase again. So that's how we approach this, and that's the flexibility that we build into the program looking out into the future. So does anyone have any questions regarding the payments and how they're structured?
Yeah, I do. In terms of tax... When you said no tax increase, what exactly does that mean? Break that down. What does that look like?
So the bills last year that went out in the fall, it was just called Taxure 22 on the bill. For school district debt service millage, it said 36.3. We anticipate it will not change going forward.
And how does that benefit the public?
You're funding your needs with a mil rate that you disclose to the public and they approve with Phase I of the bond referendum. And you have done a good financial job projecting and balancing your needs and taxation. What the public typically does not like is when your debt service millage rate is going up and down and up and down and up and down. It's more confusing. So having a dedicated mil rate and doing the math and the homework to figure out the balance between needs and taxation produces this result, a millage rate that everyone knows what the goal and objective is, and we meet it.
And this is public information. What is a millage rate?
It's the amount that goes on your tax bill.
Right. But how is that generated? Like, what's the definition of... I mean, some people who may be watching, they don't know what millage rate. What is that?
I really... I guess I haven't had this question before. It is... You take your property value and you multiply it by the number of mills to equal the amount of revenue. That the mil rate is that the amount that you're multiplying against the assessed valuation of the property. Thank you.
Dr. Wozniowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the number one, thank you. I just wanted to say that because this is the result of a lot of hard work of your team, the district. And I think this is going to set us up for a successful Phase II referendum. So just thank you to all of you. The question is on the Phase II referendum program, what is that projected amount to maintain, this 36.3?
The magic question.
Sorry I had to ask.
So what we did is we took the liberty of picking an amount. And whatever amount we pick, we always use a conservative interest rate. So we use 5%. We did not anticipate it costing 5%, but we want to go with the most conservative. And so we used a number of $400 million, and we use an interest rate of 5%. And with those two variables, you actually have a little bit of a range. Because if we were to say 4.5%, could we borrow a little bit more? Sure. If we had 5.5%, can we borrow a little bit less? Sure. And there's a little bit of flexibility, as you can see, in the repayment as well. So but we use 400 million as a placeholder, and we used a 5% borrowing rate. And we will see what number we are asked to run in the future.
I'd love to hear that word, conservative. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on from page five to page six. So this is all the math behind the graph. So some people like to see the structure on more of a graphic, pictorial illustration, and some like to see the nuts and bolts of the numbers. So this is the nuts and bolts of the numbers. And I'm just going to quickly go across the columns so we can identify each of the attributes. Column B represents all the general obligation bonds that have already been issued for the school district. Column C represents the installment purchase revenue bonds that the school district has outstanding. So the two bond issues through the Skago Geo Debt Program that I identified earlier make the payments on column C. Okay? Column D will be the spring Skago issuance and our projection of the principal interest due. Column E represents the 8% program. So the 8% program, from a placeholder perspective, is a borrowing of $25 million. And you can see that the repayment, a little bit larger in year one, and then we have level payments of 8.2 million. That will change. As interest rates change, it will change as the board discusses the final amount that you want to issue. But I really want to point out is that in times that we have... We come in better results, right? We go in with a budgeted value of a mil, and then we end up with an actual. When it comes in a little more favorably, we're able to pay off a bond issue a little more quickly. And what that means is we save on interest expense, which is a good thing. So you can see that we're going to save a little bit on interest expense under column E because we're going to pay that bond off just a little bit more quickly than three level payments. And then column F is simply the installment purchase revenue bond payment that's going to be due on December 1st. So we issue that through the Skago Geo Debt Program, and the proceeds make that payment. Now, column I is the future Phase II referendum program. I was going to save the $400 million number for that, but we had a very astute question. So that is the amortization of the $400 million potential bond issue as a placeholder. And then under column G... I'm sorry, under column J is your 8% program. And I'll break out the 8% program on the next page because there is a slight adjustment in order to continue the referendum program. So before I move to the next page, are there any questions on the amortization? Okay. So moving to page seven, at column J, we break it out for all the future bond issues beyond the current year, the 2023 series. So you can see that in 2024, we expect to have a three-year borrowing for the 8% program. And then in 2025, under column C, we move to a five-year. So the 8% debt program has some elasticity, right? We can issue the debt to a one-year. And in the past, we've gone all the way out to seven years. So we really want to kind of stay in a process where we're recycling those dollars so they become available again. And you have a policy that we'll talk about later on the debt limit page that we need to make sure that we recycle these quick enough so we can maintain your policy as well. so we can maintain your policy as well, your policy objectives. But in order to issue the phase two bond referendum and have capacity in the future, we are moving from a three-year repayment to a five-year repayment beginning in 2025. And it could, it will most likely adjust if phase two moves forward because there'll be timing differentials as the projects and as the money is needed. That's on a, we will get a draw schedule eventually through the process and then we would update this on, you know, how much we would issue in each of the years, just like on phase one. It wasn't all issued at one time, it was issued over a number of years. So are there, we pretty much run this out into perpetuity. So we really stress test the eight percent program. So are there any questions on the amortization?
Mr. Smith?
Recycling the process, what does that look like?
So when you issue a bond, you have two columns, right? You have the principal payments, you have the interest payments and your total. So the recycling is the principle. You have an amount of eight percent debt limit, you issue twenty-five million of it and you slowly get it back as you pay off those bonds. So that's what I mean by recycling. Just getting your capacity back. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to page eight. We're now going to transition into your millage rates and the value of a mill. So under column A, we identify calendar years. So that's the years that the tax bills go out. So calendar year twenty-two would be tax bills that went out in the fall of 2021, okay? So when you think about it, it's kind of plus one. So when you get your tax bill, add one to it, that's when the money actually comes in. So bills go out in the fall, money starts coming in and it has to make the payments that are due on March first and September first. So it makes a calendar year payment. So look at the calendar years, the ones with asterisks, a single asterisk, we have an audited financial statement. And so we take the audited financial statement, we go to the debt service page and we calculate the collectible value of a mill. And the reason that that's very important to notate is that that is on a cash basis. Sometimes when you look at assessed valuations, they, and you try to compute what the, what the actual amount of cash it would generate, it's more accurate in our opinion to look at cash and to look and see if there is any outlier years by looking at it on a cash basis. And you can see that under column B, doing the math, that the value of a mill, based upon the audit that was released in the fall for 2022, the value of the mill was two million one hundred and forty-eight thousand on a cash collection basis and we had a growth rate of four point nine six percent. So right now, we're in current year 2023, so that money is coming in and being received. And we work with your finance department to get those collection amounts on a monthly basis. And then we compare them to prior years and we bring it to the finance committee and we go through it on a constant basis to try and predict what the millage rate assumption would be going into the next year. So we were very, very close in our projections to what I'm showing at two and a half percent of growth rate for 2023. I think when we did the math, it was two point three eight. So it's, you know, we're, we were kind of right on it and we're still watching the amounts come in. And we will have a future finance committee meeting as we get those numbers from the finance department and we get a little closer to the year end. And we will discuss what the millage rate on a collectible value unaudited is. And then we'll also talk about the upcoming year. We have reassessment and it'll be a little bit more of a robust conversation of projecting what the number we will use for 2024. So 2024, that line that's highlighted, what that number is, is that's the bills that would go out this fall. So the fall of 2023, tax year 2023, those bills go out, you collect the money in 2024 and it makes the payments that are due. The payments that are due are carried forward under column G from the prior two pages, two pages back, okay? So those numbers will tie out. We simply do the math, the value of a mill with some state sources under column D, that's mostly homestead exemption monies that come in a little bit before May typically. And we look at our target of thirty-six point three and then we look at the simple math. And you can see that the millage remaining, we are at parity for five years. And then we open back up where we have some capacity that we identified on that graph, where you could potentially have a phase three referendum if you wanted to. If you didn't want to do that, you could accelerate your eight percent program and issue more debt and pay it off more quickly. There are just a lot of options. But the takeaway is, is that we have options. Now, one year ago and one day, because when I prepared this, it's March 24th, I presented this on March 23rd last year. So one year ago and one day, Dr. Wozneski asked me, so you have amounts available in the future. Could that be used for a referendum? And here we are a year later and she was right, we are using those amounts for the referendum. And so what she identified last year, we're simply repeating that cycle here in our structure. And so hopefully, we grow more than, under column C, the one percent. So you can see we're very conservative in the assumption of a one percent growth rate. And if we outperform, which I feel we have a high probability that we will, the numbers five years from now will simply get a little bit larger and we'll be able to support a phase three referendum with no tax increase. The key takeaway here is that we are identifying a target mill rate of thirty-six point three and we are trying our best to live within it. And reassessment is simply an opportunity for us to catch up on inflation. So if you think about it, when you look at the growth in the value of the mill and you look at the growth of inflation, there is a separate, right? We lose ground every year. So it's very important that we work together from the finance committee governance side, your staff side and your external consultant side, to really do our best to plan ahead and to stay at that thirty-six point three mils and meet as many needs as we possibly can with that cash flow stream, okay? So any questions on the millage page? I know it's a lot to absorb. Okay, so moving from page eight to page nine, we move into your constitutional debt limit, your eight percent. So we identify each year under column A, June 30th with an asterisk is a number that you will find in your audit. There's an actual, there's a page that talks about your debt limit in the audit. And so we use that to update this schedule. And it's a simple math, right? Under column I, we have the assessed valuation. We have actuals and then we move into a conservative growth of one percent. You multiply the assessed valuation by eight percent, you get a maximum number. And then you simply subtract the bonds that are existing and the bonds that you plan to issue. And you come up with the amount net available under column L. So under column L, we're projecting as of June 30th, 2023, which would be the certification of the assessed valuation as of December 31st, 2022. So if you think about it, freeze the tech, freeze everything, December 31st, 2022. And we need a few months to run the numbers and get everything certified. And then we get a certified number as of June 30th, right? About a six-month gap. We would estimate that net of existing eight percent bonds, net of the three general obligation bond issues that we've previously identified, and net of future borrowings, we would have a hundred and five point two million available June 30th, 2023. And then going forward, trying to stress test our cash flow, we would have a deep point of a hundred and eight million. Now, at the bottom left, there's three asterisks and we notate that you have a policy to maintain ten percent of the insured value of your facilities. That is a credit positive. I don't believe we have another client that does this. The rating agencies look at it as additional liquidity, they look at it as great planning. And if there is a natural disaster, that means that there are funds that you can access more quickly than potentially insurance. So your finance department provided me with the number and it's roughly a hundred million dollars that you need to maintain to meet your policy. And as you can see, we are slightly above that, so we're at parity. Now, each year, we have to stress the cash flow and each year, we have to look at whether or not we need to accelerate our eight percent bond issues to stay with the policy or not. It's just, it's an evolving calculation. But we, I'm notating today because it is part of what you all will vote on, that we are meeting policy OE six dot one seven. Does anyone have any questions on the debt limit and eight percent program?
Victor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for the estimated growth in column K, we had a negative growth of negative three point nine percent. It's estimated, when will we know that? Are you saying June is when we'll know what that actual growth is?
That actually, that number actually came from the audit. So I don't have the detail behind it as to why there's a slight negative.
Well, I'm not asking that, but like, what, if we have a, when will we know if we have a negative? And how will it affect column L and what are, I mean?
Good question. So the 2023 line item, the one that's highlighted?
Yep.
We will get that actual number, not a pro forma number, which is what I'm showing, June 30th, 2023. No later than that, we'll get a certification.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was asking. And if it's a negative growth again, what does that, how does that affect column L?
It will, it will slightly go down.
Okay. Thank you.
But the bonds will be issued after we have that number.
Mr. Smith?
What exactly, what is a bond?
A bond?
It was bond.
It's like a mortgage. So when you go buy a house, right, you sign documents and you have a obligation between you and an institution. And it's backed by your ability to repay and backed by the collateral of the home. Here, we have, just go through general obligation bonds. We have a general obligation bond. You issue the general obligation bond, there is an agreement between you and the bondholders. And your bond is backed by the full faith and credit or your taxing base. So it's simply an agreement to receive money and then pay money back with a principal plus an interest rate.
And then also, you said that at some point, I'm in your explanation, you were saying that for some period of time, that we pause, we put a hold on it. And when we pause on that bond, where's the funding coming from that we're generally running from on a day-to-day basis, where's that funding coming from?
I don't, I don't think I've discussed a pause. Every year, we issue through the eight percent program and then on an as-needed basis, we issue through the referendum program. So there's no real pause. Maybe in the referendum program, we have phase one and then we go through phase one and then we do a phase two, we work through phase two and then potentially a phase three. Is that, is that what you're referring to?
No, at some point in time, during your presentation on this page particularly, what you said was that, and maybe I, maybe I didn't hear it correctly, heard the way you envisioned it, what you were saying. But I believe that you said that at some point in time, maybe we paused one and then we, one time, one funding and then we wait for, at some point in time, I believe that going into the conversation here, Mr. Nave was having. You said that, then we wait for funding to come in?
Yeah, I apologize if I misspoke or it's something complicated.
I should, I should, the question was on my share, I should have written it down. But I remember you just saying, saying that, that's also made me to, made me want to ask the question about the bond. But I'll come back to it, I'll circle back on it.
Okay.
Colonel Guyer.
This is very complicated and so I'd like to, for the public, to put this in more simple terms. Our bond, we have a bond for referendum. That is, like Mr. Nurek said, a mortgage. It's long-term, it's twenty-five years to pay it off. And we have to have public approval to do that. Eight percent, we do not have to have public approval. We can, just based on being a governmental agency, we can borrow up to eight percent of the total assessed value of all the property in your county. So you look, for the public, look at that like a credit card. You get a credit card from a bank and that credit card comes with a limit, a credit limit. That's like eight percent, that's our limit of what we can borrow without having to go through any kind of thing with the public. We could just borrow that in unconscious. But when we borrow that amount at eight percent, it's like a credit card too. You want to pay that off because generally, the interest rate is going to be higher than what you do for a twenty-five-year bond. So in this case, we're looking to pay it off in about four, five years, pay it off. Just like you would want to do with a credit card to say, you had, all of a sudden, your heating and air conditioning system went out and you just got a ten thousand dollar bill. Well, I got a credit card, it gives me a fourteen thousand dollar credit limit. I'm going to put it on my credit card and, but I'm going to want to pay that thing off. But I don't have to get approval from a bank or from a taxpayer to be able to get the money. So that's the difference, is look at, look at eight percent as our credit card. Look at the bond issues from referendum as our mortgage. And that's the balance that we have to deal with. And it's very important that we have about a hundred million dollars in our credit card limit. Because if we had a natural disaster, we do have some fund balance, but not nearly enough to put us all back in schools and get everything, all the buildings replaced and everything that would have to be done. So we have a credit card. We can quickly get an eight percent bond issue so that we can go out and fix things and get kids back at school. So we have a billion dollars worth of infrastructure, a billion dollars. So we have ten percent sitting there in our credit card that if we had to use it, we can use it. And that's why it's very, very important that we maintain this borrowing authority in eight percent. And that we maintain the stability that Brian's been talking about. And why that's important is the credit rating. Because when Moody's and others look and give us a credit rating, they want to see a couple of things. They want to see if we've got governance, that we have a good, strong governance of how we're spending and how we're borrowing. They want to see stability. That's why when Brian talks about thirty-six point three, keeping that debt the same, that's, they look at that and say, hey, that's good. When they look and see that we have liquidity of a hundred million dollars, that's good. And that's so important because as we go forward, interest rates are going to climb. And we want to have the best interest rate we can get. And the best interest rate we can get comes from our credit rating. The higher the credit rating, the lower the interest that we have to pay. So all of this is all put together in a big picture that you have to explain to constituents. And that's, that's always difficult because this is so complex and so complicated, that you've got to simplify it. And the simple answer is, we are very responsible and we're very deliberate and we're very conservative. We make conservative assumptions of how much revenue we're going to get in. We make conservative predictions of how much we're going to be spending. That's the way we run things. And that's why we got a good credit limit and that's why we got to sustain that credit.
Henry.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Share. Okay. This has been a very good presentation and I think Dr. Wozneski highlighted a point as did Colonel Guyer. Projections are conservative. And if you look at page five, you'll see where going forward, even as the projection of a significant referendum, we will be able to fund forward years using eight percent and the of age two. So that is the liquidity. The other thing I'd like to point out is both bond markets and equity markets exploring an organization that uses projections. So the conservative projections are reassuring to me because the staff and the superintendent Rodriguez have built in a cushion so that we're going to make those cushions and then you add on the layer of KFR and the superintendent and the board leadership of the clock effort where they have gone through a couple of reconfigurations to cut costs. So there are lots of things here. So there are lots of things here that I see as very comforting. And so it's, I'm very impressed. I'm not an expert on bonds and equity and all of those type things, had a little bit of exposure, but it's been very comforting compared to what I've seen in some other situations. And kudos to the team.
Thank you.
So any other questions on page nine before we move to page 10? Okay, so page 10 is essentially column H here. So column H, we, we continue the 8% program into perpetuity. And under column 10, I'm sorry, on page 10, column B, we show again the principal portion of the three-year repayment of a bond next year. And then in 2025, we show, move into five years to be able to layer in that phase two possible referendum. And then we run it out into perpetuity, as you can see on column H. So that's really just the math behind the prior column, column J. So I'm going to move to page 11. So this is our second-to-last slide. So last year, we in the finance committee discussed this page at length, and we actually went through an approval process before we sent it over to the county auditor for consideration. So what this is, this is a, it's a, a one-page, all of the debt payments that have to be covered from our beginning cash balance and then our tax year 2023 projections. And so as you can see, under the estimated revenues, we identify the estimated beginning cash balance as of June 30, 2023, of $13 million. That number will be, become a more actual number as your finance department continues to receive receipts and they reconcile your bank statements. We identify what the amount 36.3 mils will generate. That's currently projected at 80 point, I'm sorry, yeah, 80.7 million dollars. That will adjust because we're going to have reassessment in these numbers coming forward. And we'll also see what growth we've received in the current tax year. And then we have an amount of the 1.6 million state sources, that's again, that homestead exemption mostly money. So when you go to your audit and you go to the debt service page, you'll see these same amounts listed, same, not amount, same categories listed, the actual amounts. Now, the revenue that's generated in that beginning cash balance have to cover 18 months' worth of payments. So we identify your June 2023, your this coming fall payments, which is roughly $7.8 million. And then we have the spring payments, so we identify your March 2024 payments that are due, which is roughly $75.4 million. And then we have, again, the fall of 2024, so your September 2024 payments of just around $6.9 million. And so we have total revenues of $95.3 million, and we have total expenses of $90.1 million. And then we look at the cash balance two ways. We look at it as of June 30, 2024, that's the $12,141. But we still have those September payments that we have to cover with that amount. So our deep point is December 31, 2024, and right now I'm showing it at 5.2 million. We work through these calculations through the finance committee, and typically, we end up staying at a $5 million target as our low point for the year, which is around two and a half mils, sorry, roughly two mils. So that's the process that we go to. The reason it says draft on it is because these numbers will change, the assumptions will change, the payment amounts will change. And then ultimately, we will, through the finance committee, remove draft, we will have a final, and then we will send that over to the county. So this is really how we get to your tax year 2023, as it says in the title, what those bills will say. And all the math that has to go into making sure that it's the right amount. Are there any questions on this page?
Dr. Wasniewski?
I just have one that's somewhat going backwards. Trying to find the page number, apology. That 1.6 million that's projected for the state revenues, do we receive any type of projections from the state for that, or is that just kind of one of those conservative?
What we do is we look at the prior year audit, and typically it doesn't go down. And so we kind of conservatively look at, just keep, keep it static. As a percentage of the overall revenues is rather small, so we don't spend too much time digging into it. But I think the biggest point on those monies is it comes after, comes in after your March first payment. So it's really more an amount that gets applied towards the fall.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move to the final page, which will kind of pull everything all into, into one slide, the core goals and objectives. So just to rehash what we've just gone through on, on one page, we have core goal and objective of funding the annual maintenance through your 8% program. I've adjusted that to $25 million annually, and I put off to the right subject of adjustments. So every year, the board goes through a process for the 8% program. But we stress test all of our assumptions and cash flows based upon 25 million. Second is the funding of large projects, and that's through the referendum program as appropriate and when needed. And we're going through that process right now. We've identified earlier that conservatively, we've used a placeholder of 400 million. And to the extent that that moves forward, we're prepared to issue those bonds. And then we've also structured the debt to have some flexibility down the road. And if you wanted to do a phase three, hopefully the situation would be favorable like it is today. Number three is we want a structured debt service millage rate. So we have identified the 36.3 mils and the revenue that we believe that it will generate. And we have this balance of how many needs can we get done with 36.3 mils. We know we'll never get all the needs done, but we will do the best that we can, and we will manage it as best as possible. And then lastly is manage the credit ratings. And I show on a, on a pyramid where the school district is in red for Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And in order to achieve these goals, we have to have the highest credit rating possible. And in times of economic uncertainty, that credit rating becomes the gold standard as opposed to lower credits. And I think that is one of the hallmarks here, is that this program has the ability to weather a lot of different types of storms because it's so well-run with all the stakeholders involved, but it also has the highest credit ratings that I believe is, are possible for you to get, and we're leveraging that as best as possible. So are there any questions or anything I may have missed?
Ingrid?
I don't have any questions. I've talked to you a couple of times about this. I just wanted to say I feel like the district is in good hands. I feel like we're organized, it's laid out, it's clear to understand, it's transparent. So I don't have the financial acumen of Dr. Wasniewski and Colonel Guyer, but I do have, as a parent and a community member and taxpayer, I have a high level of confidence in our debt projections going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dr. Rodriguez?
I just want to thank you, Brian. Your explanations are always thorough, very clear for people to understand, and we appreciate working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate those words.
Carlton?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I did like to say as a newbie, I think this is a superb presentation, and it reflects that what we used to call the ability for the school district to execute the fidelity of the plan that builds credibility with the lending community. And one thing we have put on the radar to make sure we're vigilant about, and can probably maybe refer that to a legislative committee at some point, is that there are changes in the way our school district is financed. That would be something we want to keep a watch on high on. But, no, but this is just a phenomenal job done by Ms. Crosby, staff, the board, the alumni, so thank you, and Mr. Nurek. Thank you all.
Yeah, Carlton, you touched upon something I was thinking of. Excellent presentation as always, Brian, thank you. I just think we need to educate the county council and the Beaufort County delegation about this. They really don't know the details, and so they make assumptions that are, that are not accurate, only because they, I don't think they have the information. So is there a way that we can get this to our, our, our county council members and our Beaufort County legislative delegation? Because we are trying to work as a board for obtaining what's called fiscal authority and having the ability to present our budget and set the millage for the operational side, not just the debt service side.
I think what Mr. Nurek has highlighted here today is really, and I'm going to take an opportunity to brag, but it's the wonderful team that we have in our finance here at Chief Finance Officer and her team here in the school district. They help position us on an ongoing basis every day and are focused on positioning us in the best possible place with responsible management of our funding for schools. And it's clear, and it's well-articulated here by Mr. Nurek. And I think one thing I would suggest as we are moving down this road of fiscal authority, it might be wonderful if it was possible to have a presentation for our state delegation where, where maybe Mr. Nurek can join us and, and speak about this with them and provide the same kind of explanation that he was able to do today. Because I think it would be wonderful for them to know and see just how responsible the management is regarding our fiscal operations here in the district.
Dr. Wasniewski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think one of the things that's great about our finance department is that they're responsive and they listen to the various stakeholders. You know, you guys go forward, when board members come up to you with ideas or thoughts, you guys are very responsive, and I personally appreciate that. I was going to mention perhaps that we get an executive summary if that's possible. I know that those one-page executive summaries have been great for me as a board member, and I know that legislators and county council members are also strapped for time. I think a presentation would be great as well, but an executive summary of kind of everything that was covered or touched on, that shows kind of where we've been, how we got where we are, that would be, I think, very useful and illuminating for them.
That's just what I was thinking, is a one-page summary. And I don't know, I'm not trying to make work for you, but if they wanted more than that, like if you had like a 15, 15-minute Zoom presentation for them, same thing with the highlights to really further explain the one-page summary, or maybe that wouldn't even be necessary. But I think, keep, I don't want to, keep it simple and short and the highlights. And I just think it's important for us to, to educate the other elected officials that just, I don't think really have this information, or not certainly in the depth that we have this information. And we need to get it out there. We need to promote the school district. The school district has done a great job with the Board of Education overseeing all the finances. And it's, it's time that public and, and the elected officials for the county and the state realize that or see that.
And I think what's important is it's not just a one-year thing, right? You see that this is, this is a strategy that is in place that moves us in a direction and positions us where we are. So it's a long-term strategy that is, that is being implemented, and it's working.
Chloe Corden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank you for the presentation. And also my colleagues for asking questions that I was sitting here saying, oh, it's a bond, you know, it was, it was a mill. So I appreciate your patience in covering that. But I really wanted to thank Ms. Crosby and her team diligently, with fidelity, with money, with our taxpayers' money that we are in charge of. But she does this every year. This team is awesome. I think they need to be commended with a round of applause. And thank you for keeping us out of jail. Because you know, one thing that an organization can, can kill you with is your finances, if they're not where the taxpayers' money should be. So thank you for telling us where it is. While we have a bond, and I think sometimes people think that we just have $300 million just sitting here in the county office here, but it's not, it's not here in that, in that terms. But I do thank you, and I appreciate you, appreciate you. And Dr. Rodriguez, thank you for overseeing our taxpayers' money. I will, I like your questions, they, they too, because I had to say.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I'm just in terms, just in terms of the getting the information out, I don't see why this information can't be placed on the issue website. And in terms of this whole presentation, you know how you're cutting page though, you can just have this part of the meeting to, the media displays on the, on the website as well as this, this packet, or put it, make this packet available so that our county council members and whoever else in the public, who want to see this information, this information is public, just go ahead and put it, and put it out. And I'm not sure what the, what Malley would need for us to be to do that. But I mean, since we want to get it out there, then those are two, two avenues right there that we can, do those immediately to get that information out. Move with thought.
So Tanya, before Randy comes up here, what about a five-minute break for restroom? Does that sound good? All right, so we'll be back at 20:11.
I want to just take their seats. All right. All right, we have six board members here and we have two on the phone. So I'll let Tanya introduce you and so you can start, Franny.
Sure. Once again, Franny Heiser with Burr from Inver. Franny's our bond counsel, has been bond counsel for many years. And she keeps us out of the woods and is constantly communicating with me and with Brian as well as the team to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make sure the debt program runs very smoothly. So I'm going to turn this over to Franny.
Thank you, Tanya. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank y'all for letting me be with y'all today. Usually by our role here, it's just as Brian's driver. Brian had to leave and he's on his way back, flying back to Kentucky. Excuse me. I know as part of y'all's agendas, every regular board meeting, you have points of celebration. And over the years, debt day has actually been a point of celebration. Might have been a couple of years where it was a little rocky, but I think y'all are now back to the point of this debt day being a point of celebration. I can tell you that the school districts I represent and I work with probably close to half of the school districts in the state, to have a capital improvement plan and a financing plan that rolls out as y'all does is something that I'm not sure any other school district can do. So the possibility of y'all having a significant referendum with no tax increase is a great, I mean, it's a huge advantage for y'all. And it's obviously not by accident, it's something that has been planned for. So a number of the things I was going to talk about have already been discussed. I don't think we need to go back into too much about the 8% debt limit versus referendum debt. For the new board members, just want to point out that school districts have very limited ways that it can borrow money. And general obligation debt is generally what you see. There's also the potential for lease purchase agreement. There's also the potential to acquire equipment through an acquisition use and security agreement. That transaction is where you make annual purchase payments and at the end of the transaction, you are the owner of all the equipment. Y'all have had one acquisition use and security agreement and it's paid off. And I think Tanya would prefer to not have another one.
It was 40 buses.
40 buses. That was for the buses. Sometimes we see technology being purchased through an acquisition use and security agreement, but y'all generally use your 8% or referendum funds for that. So general obligation debt, general obligation bond. Mr. Smith asked, what is a bond? Brian's answer was correct, but there are a few more features to a general obligation bond. It is actually an unconditional promise to pay. And with a bond goes the legal requirement that your county auditor levy sufficient millage to make principal and interest payments and to create a sinking fund for the purpose of that debt. So you, the school board, y'all decide how much you borrow. You decide through your staff and Brian what the repayment plan is going to be. That information is sent to the county auditor and treasurer through a document called the Notice to Levy and Collect. And that is under the Constitution and under state law. That triggers the necessity that taxes be levied without limit to make sure that there's enough money to pay general obligation bonds. There also is a safety net for school district general obligation bonds. And in state law, there's a provision that if a county treasurer does not have sufficient funds to make a bond payment, that two weeks out, two weeks before the payment is due, the state treasurer is notified. And if there's not enough funds, the state treasurer advances those funds. And I'm sort of going off-script here since so much of what I was going to talk about y'all already did. Again, for new board members, we call that the statutory intercept program. And Brian mentioned that on a programmatic basis, every school district in the state gets access to a double A credit rating because of that state intercept. And it's only for school districts. Cities and counties don't have that provision. So for y'all to be a standalone double A, particularly double A plus, really separates y'all from almost all of the school districts in terms of your credit rating. So with 8% debt, obviously, the 8% debt limit that we've talked about, that's sometimes called the constitutional debt limit, sometimes called the 8% limit. And I think as Colonel Guyer correctly described, those are funds that you use for your smaller projects and you typically pay that back, as Brian said, in three to five years. So for any sizable project, you're not going to use your 8% debt limit, you're going to use a referendum. And so I thought I'd spend a few minutes, and this again is not really in this presentation, but a few minutes talking about the referendum process. Some of y'all have been through a referendum process and some of the new members probably not. But what will happen is you've got a citizens committee working closely with Dr. Burr that will come up with a suggested list of projects. And I think in the next week or so, they're going to get together to prioritize those projects. That information goes to Dr. Rodriguez and then comes to the board. Y'all ultimately would decide which projects you want to include in the referendum. And there will be numbers associated with each project, so you'll have that ballpark of maybe around $400 million. Once y'all have decided on the projects, because that is y'all's discretion, not the committee's, it's up to y'all. I then take the list of projects and work closely with Robert, Tanya, Dr. Rodriguez to create a ballot question. So that's the document that actually will be voted on by the public. We put that ballot question in a resolution that we bring to you. And so you, the board, would adopt a resolution that includes the ballot question. So y'all stay in control of exactly what it is that the voters will vote on. Once y'all have adopted a resolution ordering the referendum, we're in a situation where do's and don'ts start to apply. Do's and don'ts mean that under state law, you cannot use any public resources to advocate for or against a ballot measure. So no school resources can be used for anything other than education. So the school district can educate, but not advocate. And we worked closely with your Public Information Officer for the first phase of the referendum. And y'all did a great job with the education piece. There was a separate group, separate from the school district, that was like the vote yes committee. And presumably that would be organized again. But the key is that the school district won't have anything to do with the vote yes committee. So as we get closer, as y'all get closer to making a decision on exactly what the referendum will look like, I'll make a more detailed presentation to you about the do's and don'ts so that we all stay on the right side.
Are there any questions? Ingrid.
So hard to raise your hand and like see the whole. I credit you, Madam Chair, for trying to keep it all organized. I have a couple of questions. Where are the budget numbers coming from? When you say that what comes to the CRPC will have numbers attached, do we know who's providing those numbers?
Yes. So in essence, you're talking about costs of different projects and things like that.
Yeah, like X project will be 17 million.
Right. So we will probably have it reviewed by two separate groups. One would probably is hearing that will do one projection. And then I'll probably ask for another projection, just to double-check numbers and make sure that we're in a good place.
And that will be, so that hasn't started yet, that will be after they generate the list.
Right.
Okay. And my second question is, we talked about educate versus advocate and how we, the question in the first referendum, the two-part question caused some confusion, you know, if, yeah, if you vote one and required a lot of additional education to the public about what that was. We sent out marketing materials based on schools, trying to explain like what was included for each school. Is there any liability that we have in terms of those marketing materials? Like are those binding the same way a question is binding? Are educational materials, if we say if you vote for this, because the wording of the referendum, I'm assuming will be similarly sort of, it's not going to be that list that we develop, right? We're going to do this, this, this. But if in the education materials that we pass out, do we have to be careful in terms of creating a commitment that is legally binding outside of the question? Does that make sense?
It does. My first response is y'all do not create marketing materials.
Oh, not education materials?
Education materials. And the answer is no. What is binding is what the voters vote upon. I will say however, that making commitments and keeping those commitments are really important in terms of success for future referendums.
Totally concur. Thank you.
Ms. Hay or Mr. Dallas?
No questions, I think it's been answered. We participate as a group, a separate private group, and supported the 2018 referendum. The material, the educational material that we were using were provided. And we, I think, conducted about 24 different meetings throughout the county in the hopes of going to mount something like that again, even on a broader scale. So we've got a good track record, a good job with the term reference and the execution. So I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wuzniewski.
So in, thank you, Madam Chair. In Mr. Nurek's presentation, there was the mention of the dollar amount that Phase Two may come in at. And then there's the work that the community project committees are doing. So my question is, in the Phase One referendum, we had, you know, 600 and something worth of needs, we whittled that down. My question is kind of in regard to that 400 number. Are we going to poll or survey the public to determine whether or not they will support that number? Because I think when we had the 600 number, it was we realized that was too much and that was kind of what was the impetus to us reducing it down. That 400, sounds good to me, but I don't know what others might say. So I guess my question is, are we going to survey?
I think that's certainly something, you know, we can look at. One thing I would say is when we were in that 2019 referendum, we hadn't passed a bond referendum, right? So we have a certain millage rate that exists right now that did not exist at that time. That's the first thing. The second thing is, in addition, I think one of the things I heard Brian talk about earlier was that that stability is also helpful and important. And what you don't want to do is create peaks and valleys in the process of that whole thing. I mean, we know that even though that number is 400, possibly, right? And I don't even really want to talk about 400 because somebody will hear that today and be running out there, 400, 400, 400. We don't really know yet, right? So, but the thing is, we want, you know, that consistency, I heard him say clearly is important. And we know that there's more than 400 worth of overall needs anyway, right? So I think, I want to see what that committee brings back. I want to see what all the pieces look like and then go from there.
Sure.
I was just going to, and I agree with you, Dr. Rodriguez, that we should see what the community committee brings to us and see what that final number is going to be. I just want to make sure that if that number does exceed what our 2019 ask was, that we consider doing a survey that's not just to parents, a survey that's to various different community groups so we get a good lens and idea of, is the community behind this? And also how much education do we have to do in terms of ramping that support up?
I think what's important when you do that, though, I think it's also important that there's an explanation, not just a survey out there, a conversation about it. Because you can see that for a certain millage rate, we were able to have $344 million, right, a bond referendum. But for the same millage rate right now, you can have 400, right? And people might just hone in on 400 and say, oh my gosh, you're driving everything up. But really, you're not driving it up, you're maintaining the same number, right? So that's the complexity of being able to communicate effectively around that on a survey without a dialogue that...
Tanya. Yes. I do want to... Yeah, hold on a second. Ms. Crosby was next and then I'll call on you, Mr. Dallas.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention that in developing the financing plan, we asked, what is the number? There is not a number yet. So we established a placeholder. And so I don't want to make there any misconceptions that that is the number that will be going forward. It could be more, it could be less, but we had to have something to develop the plan, the financing plan, and that was the value that we chose. So typically, we would not do that until we actually got the number from the project team. But we will continue to, you know, listen in on the conversations, participate, and then adjust those plans as we move forward. So.
Go ahead, Mr. Dallas.
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of points. To the 400 number, in terms of fiscal approach, that becomes one of those if this then. And so I think it was looked at, if the referendum, this 400 here is how the numbers were looking, which was viewed as a very conservative pick. The other thing is, I think if we focus on the best evidence demand that occurring in the county, not only in terms of population growth and inflow of, you know, future needs relative to programmatic decisions, I think, and if we have a Dr. Wuzniewski was referring, if we have a good, strong education process. I think the public already is aware. So at Main River, there's a little pocket in the Main River Facility Masters booklet that shows kids who are living next door have gone to Bluffton High School. And I think just showing that and people knowing that the intent is to alleviate that so that common communities go to the same school, I think that will build a tremendous amount of support for the referendum. And the last thing is, again, going back to our way of finances and the project management... and the project management, and it's basically more to accommodate some real amazing unplanned things, budgets, and everything. And so I'm very comfortable. Always got to watch out for those unforeseen things. But a lot of effort can put into identifying them. Thank you all.
I can make two quick points. Evaluating public sentiment and what your community wants and will support is legitimate expenditure for the school district. There's no problem with that. I'd recommend that if you're going to do something like that, that it happen before the board votes on the resolution. And as much time as y'all need is fine, except August the fifteenth, noon on August the fifteenth is the final deadline to have the resolution delivered to your localization commission. But we don't want to miss that deadline. So thank y'all very much.
Go ahead, Colonel Guyer.
One thing that I'd like Ms. Kaiser to talk to us about. I don't think the board knows about arbitrage. And what we're talking about is we float a bond. And we sell the bond for a hundred million dollars. And so when we sell it, the treasurer gets a hundred million dollars. We don't spend a hundred million dollars right then. We have time to spend it. So could you tell us a little bit about, because that's a legal, there's a legal and a tax issue that you could tell us about, please?
Correct. The Internal Revenue Service has numbers of rules that we have to meet in order for your debt to be tax exempt. Tax exempt means that the person receiving the interest payment does not have to declare that interest as income on their taxes. Hence the phrase tax exempt. One of the rules that the IRS has prevents an entity like a school district from borrowing money at one rate, investing the money at a higher interest rate, making a lot of money, and keeping it. So arbitrage is the difference between your borrowing rate and the rate that you can invest the funds. Now arbitrage can be positive or negative. For a good number of the last ten years, there was negative arbitrage. Interest rates, borrowing rates were very low, like one and a half percent, two percent. But the investment rates were even lower, like point one percent. So in those years, you would have had negative arbitrage. With interest rates rising now on the investment side, thanks to what the Fed's doing as they increase the Fed rate, it is very possible that you will borrow at a one level and you will be able to invest the funds at a higher level. So that is positive arbitrage. And arbitrage is not a bad thing. The IRS lets you earn as much arbitrage, lets you earn arbitrage up to the point of the amount that you're paying on the debt. So if the borrowing rate is two percent and the investment rate is three percent, well, you can keep two of those three percents. And that other one percent has to be rebated back to the IRS. Now, Brian showed you numbers that are amounts that are on hand from other older bond issues. And he mentioned that we know that that amount is available. That means that a rebate consultant has done the calculations. And they have determined that there is either no rebate liability or if there is rebate liability, it has been paid. So like I say, positive arbitrage is a good thing as long as you don't spend the money that you have to send back to the IRS. And Tonya's totally on top of that. I think so a few years ago, we were cleaning up some. The team, the team stays on top of that. Some years ago, we were cleaning up like a lot of little pieces of debt that had been left over. That's all now been solidified. It's, you're on top of it. And your finance folks will make sure that the rebate calculations are made in a timely fashion. So that if you ever do need to rebate money back to the IRS, you will have that money available. Okay? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser.
Fran, I just want to thank you as well for the work that you do with our team.
It really is a team effort. And I got to say, it's always fun to come and give you all this. You know, Brian's got all the good news. But it's always fun driving in here with, so. But we appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with y'all. Kind of like Delta, we know you have a choice. And we appreciate, we do appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Can I just bring up one point that I don't want to belabor or anything, but I've been approached by one of the Project Review Committee members, 2.0. And one of their questions to me was, because we're talking about referendum funding, is, you know, that there's a lot of HVAC needs. Why are these HVAC needs not being addressed under SIR? That's my question. You don't have to respond to it. But, or maybe they are, but I think we need to, that needs to be very clear. And especially now towards the end of the referendum, you know, review and deciding, you know, what's going to be presented to the board. Okay, so I just wanted to say that since we had touched that.
All right, you ready for the next topic?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So as I follow up on, as I conclude the OE, I don't believe you all have the OE cover sheet. So what I will do is bring that to the next Finance Committee meeting with the one-page executive summary. And so we'll do a brief agenda item to review. And the evidence that we provided today will be the evidence for that OE for next time. So no vote is needed for today. So next up is a reassessment presentation. This all came about when Mr. Guyer and I went and met with the County Treasurer, Maria Wall. And I was under, in the belief that reassessment was occurring next year. I still have one more year. But we were surprised to find that it is actually this year. So that does have some effects on the district. And so really, the first thing that I thought was, well, what is a reassessment? And who does what? And what is it for? And that sort of thing. So I reached out to Ms. Ebony Sanders, our county assessor, Beaufort County Assessor. And she graciously agreed to come present to the board today. We do have some handout folders, which is a PowerPoint presentation that she will be delivering. But also, she has provided this wonderful guide that is or will soon be ultimately on her, on the county website as well. It's a guide to reassessment for the 2023 year. So I've read over the previous one, and it's very valuable information. So I would recommend, greatly recommend that you take a look at that if you have some time. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ebony Sanders.
I appreciate you inviting me here and allowing me to speak before you. As she introduced me, I'm Ebony Sanders. I serve as the Assessor for Beaufort County and the Citizens for Beaufort County. You see that you have the reassessment guide. And that, again, as she said, is going to be posted on our website. There were questions that were previously asked of one of the presenters. And you will find in some of the terminology with regards to like millage rate, that is defined in the terminology of the reassessment guide. So you have that there in front of you, some of the other terminology, like assessment and reappraisal. Looking at terminology guide in that document, it is extensive. It's twenty-eight pages. So we try to make it very user-friendly for the public. We try to have it in terms in which they can understand what's going on. And the folder that I gave you is a PowerPoint presentation that I presented to County Council about a month ago. And it's, I thought it would be helpful for this meeting because there's a couple of things that I think the reassessment is very important. But also legal residency and special assessment, because that does affect the school operation bills and those type of things. But again, my role, I'm going to go over my role real quick as the county assessor. As the county assessor, our department and me in particular, we're the sole persons or persons involved with determining the fair market value of property. We are the sole ones to determine what the assessment is going to be with regards to legal residency, four percent, six percent. We do not value industrial properties, as done by the Department of Revenue. But we do, and we are involved with anything brick and mortar and dirt. So if you think dirt, that's us. If you think a car, that's the auditor, can't help you. If you think about how you want to pay your taxes, that's the treasurer. So that's how to keep it simple and as we tell our taxpayers. I'm going to speak primarily from the information package you have. The reassessment guide is just an aid. It helps you kind of tie, bring it all together. But to begin, again, what we do, what I do. And you're going to see where our responsibilities and my responsibilities as the county assessor, there's forty-six counties, I'm one of forty-six assessors in the entire state. And our responsibilities outlined in Title XII of the South Carolina Code of Law, it's twelve thirty-seven ninety. You'll see that on one of the slides on your packet. And it defines what our responsibilities are. Again, we don't take the money, we don't deal with personal property. We value and we deal with exemptions. We actually turn our valuations over to the county auditor so that determinations can be made with regards to setting millage rates. We also turn it over to our finance department, which includes our county finance officers and CFOs so that they're counted aid to govern what's needed to run county government and to determine rates. We deal with due transfers, we deal with sale transactions. We record building permits if something is new, even if it's exempt or not exempt. We have to inventory that property. We have to determine the value of the properties in Beaufort County to know what the county has actually worked based on real. Yep. So if you go further in your packet, you will see where the quadruples, what we're here to talk about today. So what is a reassessment? I tell taxpayers, it's every so many years. It's where we do, we revalue all the properties in the entire county. Unlike a fee appraiser, which we are appraisers, I am one as well, we do not have a choice whether or not we can turn down an assignment. So like a fee appraiser, you may hire to do financing for your home or you just want to go to value your home. That appraiser can say whether or not they want to have you valued it or not. They're going to say, they can turn the assignment down. I don't want to do this assignment for whatever reason. The whole entire county is our assignment. We are responsible for valuing every property in Beaufort County and maintaining those values in our tax records so that each one of the properties can be taxed fairly. It's based on equity, it's based on uniformity, and it's based on effective date. Our office is governed by multiple agencies. We're governed by the Department of Revenue. We're governed by the South Carolina, South Carolina Code of Law. We're governed by an International Association of Assessment Officials. And we're also governed by local jurisdictional laws. The quadrennial reassessment, as you can see in the packet as well, is outlined in the South Carolina Code. We aren't making this up. It comes under Title XII as well. And again, we're going to implement this year. Our last quadrennial reassessment was in 2018. But this year, we're going to have, we're going to have a new one. And as you may know in your communities, there was a lot of activity, a lot of sales, a lot of people moving in, you know, and price value. We're going to talk about valuations, and they are increasing shortly. But it's mandated by code that in between county reassessments, there are, I call them mini reassessments, where we do a small segment of the population because law requires that if a transaction occurs. But otherwise, everything is done once a year. So again, why do we reassess? Well, it's mandated by law. That's the number one reason. It's one of the cycle, and this is now, now is our time. And it freezes assessment values, it's an assessment freeze based on effective date. And it cures any un-uniformity or non-uniformity in an area. Valuations can increase and valuations can decrease. Not in our market, we haven't seen that. Analyzing the sales that we've had so far, there's not decreasing values. I can tell you all know the activity has been going on since COVID, the pandemic with sales. We use the same valuation date for this quadrennial reassessment, it's twelve thirty-one twenty-two. We're going to send out notices this year in the fall. Our assessment has to be approved by the South Carolina Department of Revenue. This is not, this is one of those years when quadrennial reassessment occur. We can come up with numbers, we can provide projections to the different entities. And that's municipalities, the school boards, those type of requiring that data. But until we get a pass from the Department of Revenue, those numbers are not finalized. So we have to get that nice A letter, not an F letter. And we look forward to getting that. In your packet, you'll also see historically historical data for Beaufort County with regards to our market value and our taxable value. The market value is what the values of the properties are worth. That's not necessarily what taxpayers are paying on. This is what the set of properties, residential, commercial, vacant, properties are worth in Beaufort County. That includes exempt properties as well. It's like the building that we're in, although it may be exempt, as the county assessor, we're required to place a valuation on it. Even though its taxes are not paid, or we have to know what this building, what's the valuation of this building. And it's required by law that we even value exempt, exempt properties. We don't tax exempt properties now, however. So the market value is, again, what the market is as of a specific date, with the county's word. The taxable value is what taxpayers pay taxes on. That does not include the exempt, the building that we're in today would not be in that taxable number. The taxable value does not include the valuations of other areas like, that's not all, I'm just going to say all non-exempt properties. For example, there are schools, there's hospitals, there's those type of things that's considered non-exempt, who do not pay, they don't pay taxes. That's not in that taxable value amount. So if it's considered an exempt entity by the South Carolina Code of Law, there is not going to be in that taxable number. That taxable number is what the six and four percent is based on. So why reassess? It's mandated. Our effective date is December thirty-first, 2022. And we're going to implement in 2023. So when you go into your communities, or even yourself as taxpayers, I would tell you that if you have to appeal or if you're looking at your valuation, know that it's evaluated based on a prior year in 2022. So when our taxpayers or you look at your number and you see something that's happening in your neighborhood six months ago or a few months ago, weeks ago, that number is not reflected because the law says we actually use evaluation for a certain period and we implement in the fifth year. So how we reassess? So it's not a situation where we just pluck it out the air and say, that's what the new number is. We're all licensed appraisers. We use valuation models. Again, remember earlier in the beginning of my conversation, I said that we are regulated by these agencies, the South Carolina Code of Law, the Department of Revenue. We're regulated by an International Association Assessment Official and industry standards. So we look at the market. The market tells us where we need to go. We don't, we don't look at comparative assessments. We don't look at what the neighbor valuation is. The market is leading us, whatever the buyers and sellers are doing, that's where we have to go. So when we use these appraisal models, in Beaufort County, and currently, there's about thirteen hundred models. Each one of those models represent a neighborhood. So when we say neighborhood, there may be a neighborhood. We're in a neighborhood, let's say this community that we're, the building you're in currently, not necessarily this, but let's look at residential, for example. We would not look at appraisal model in Hilton Head to value, a valuation of a property here in this community. It doesn't make sense. That's appraisal standards. Those are those industry standards that we follow. No different than we would use a property here to value something in Bluffton. It does not fit. It's not, the buyers react differently and perform differently based on the neighborhood they're in. So right now, our appraisers have thirteen hundred appraisal models. They have to determine land value, building values for all thirteen hundred and commercial values for these thirteen hundred. That includes condominiums, mobile homes. So there's extensive amount of work behind the scene to get the valuations for Beaufort County. And you will have, I think I mentioned this, but the market numbers for last year, market value for Beaufort County was about a little over forty-eight and a half billion. Taxable worth value was a little over forty-five billion. We know, from me peeking at it, I've been peeking at it, as it's, they're baking, I call it baking the roll as we speak. It's. It's, it's, it's significantly higher than that. Yes. So we're going to see a lot of increases because of the, the activity that we've seen during the pandemic. There is a copy of your assessment notice in the, um, PowerPoint. And that's just there because there's a lot of information on there and it gets confusing sometimes. But what we try to encourage our taxpayers to really look at and hear what your market value is because that's the only thing you can appeal on is your market. Can't be on your cap value. And your, and your, also your ratio. We're going to talk about that assessment ratio shortly because that's very important to the panel that I'm speaking for today. Again, the guide is online, um, and I'm just going to flip through it real quick so you can kind of see what's in it. And let me kind of go past this. I, I kind of decreased it, the, the PowerPoint with the council because there's some other things that they needed to go through it. Please forgive me. So let's jump to legal residency special assessment ratio. Again, in your PowerPoint printout. This is a, this is for, this is a law. This is mandated by South Carolina Code of Law. It's, and it has to be an application that's placed in, it's not automatic. Um, the property owner has to qualify for it. Um, and it exempts the property owners from the school operation mills, also known as the school tax credit. Now, keep, well, the school's tax credit is what they get. They get a credit, it's a negative on their bill. Now, keep in mind that the assessor's office, we are the gatekeepers of the legal residency. All legal residency comes through the assessor's office. The value, um, the adjustment to determine whether or not the person is qualified for the exemption is determined by the assessor's office. The, um, the adjustments that's on account or what, on the actual property on the record is done through the assessor's office. So we are the gatekeepers. And there's a reason why the gate, we're the gatekeepers because we are protecting, uh, because if an individual is not paying school operation mills, that's one less dollar that's going towards the operations of school. So it's important that they have to be vetted to make sure that they truly are claiming the residency on their property. And they're actually qualified. So you become, you got to apply and be qualified. In your package, you'll also see there's a sample present, a sample tax bill. And I put that out there not only for this panel, but for council and the public. I use this presentation often to unders, attack, to understand and see the difference. You can see on the, I think it'll be in your right, left hand side, a tax bill with the legal residency. It's two thousand nine hundred and two, if my eyes are, I've got my glasses on here. But you can see it without the same type of property with a similar value. You can see that the tax bill is now seven thousand. You see that, you can see where that credit, how it, so that is coming from the school operation. I, I put that as a, so it can hit home of what we're talking about here. A lot of my taxpayers think it's just a, a two percent difference swing either way. It's not. It's not, as you can see. Okay? So it's a, it's a, it's a very, it's a good benefit for those who qualify for it. And so we have to again vet individuals. Now, the vetting process is important because you have to be eligible. You have to meet the qualifications and the burden of proof is on the taxpayer to be able to receive this exemption. It's an exemption. It's not something that you can automatically get because I moved in my house. Some of our taxpayers are under depression. They move in their house, that should have been part of their closing. No, it's an exemption, you got to qualify for it. And there are certain things in the code that is required. There's a case law. There's, um, there's case law that's went all the way to the Supreme Court with regards to the legal residency based on non-qualifying factors. Um, there's attorney general opinions. There are multi things in the code that actually direct us on how we should be able to either apply or not apply an exemption to this, um, to a taxpayer. So the count, any employee, I mean, uh, uh, taxpayer can actually apply online. It's open twenty four seven. It's online filing. We used to do paper apps before I became an assessor. Well, the pandemic changed that. And so with, with moving with technology and helping with taxpayers who are not able to always come in, we allow online filing. It's important that taxpayers understand that January fifteenth is the deadline to file for the legal residency for the prior year. So for example, if they have until January fifteenth of twenty twenty four to apply for twenty twenty three. Now, when we give projections to the different entities, we make it very clear when we show these projections that there's going to be some type of erosion to the assessed amount. Because when we give those numbers out, we still have until January fifteenth to make adjustments to twenty twenty three in this case. So does, you may have the market going to speak what it is and you got the assess is going to, I mean, the tax will be what it is. But that assessed number can erode. Because of people are coming in, once they get their tax bills, once the treasurer sends the tax bills and not collecting that money, then they come and reach out to us to say, hey, I actually qualify for this. And of course, if they meet the qualifications and they're, then you want to see, may see erosion that occurs to that assessed amount. Additionally, a taxpayer can ask for two years in the RIS. So once they come into us and we discover, how long you been there? Well, you can ask for two years in the RIS and get a refund. So that's another form of erosion that actually that person qualifies. When people do not qualify, again, we are the gatekeepers of this. And we make it, you know, we should deny them and tell them why. And if it has to be a change that something occurs later and we adjust it, we have to give them, we give them the legal residency. But that's another form of erosion after, if they go through an appeal process. So I put that out there to show that that number is ever moving. There's always a target that's never, is never stagnant. I mean, as we're speaking right now, my staff is actually adjusting accounts for the legal residency. So I have a team of people that actually do this. It's never going to be a constant closed book end of the day. So I just want you to understand how, how it's evolved and a lot of people are moving here. Last year, um, no, this year, so far we've gotten over twelve thousand applications for legal residency. Twelve thousand. Now, what we did find in that is that a lot of people, what we're finding is that people that had their second homes here are now moving here. Okay, that's erosion. They were paying the six percent rate. And now they decided, I don't want to be in New York anymore. That place got cold, so I'm coming to South Carolina. But it's the reality. It's running them people out of these urban areas to the beautiful Beaufort. And they come here and they apply the legal residency and they do qualify. So keep that in mind. Now, I will say this, our office does not determine the veteran's exceptions, which we do have quite a number of veterans that's on. Right, that's due to Department of Revenue. But once they give us that, give that to them, we go ahead and adjust the record. Um, and disabled, disable, disabled individuals as well as sixty five and older, those go through the auditor's office. So some of the things that, uh, we require a minimum, we ask for their vehicle registration if they have a car. So everybody does not have a car. Driver's license or identification card, South Carolina issued. We ask for their most recently filed South Carolina income tax return. And we also ask for a resident trust. We look at those documents. And if they're military, we get their orders and their ID and their PCS orders. So there is a vetting payer. I, we, we talk about that because I want to bring that forward to let you know that it's not a application given to them. It's a vetting. You have to, the burden of proof is on the taxpayer to prove that they're eligible to receive this exemption because it's so important. So, um, the Code of Laws is in your, your, your hand, the hand that I gave you that we rely on. I just can't stress enough that what we're doing is based on the South Carolina Code of Law, which is Title twelve. And I list the codes that we are actually bound by. So that's all, I'm trying to make it real quick. That's all, I'm trying to take it along. Um, but if you have any questions.
Colonel Guyer.
Thank you very, very much. This is very, very enlightening. And it also points out the challenge that we have. As you stated, the erosion that you deal with is a huge variable. And you've got many parts of that erosion. You have your veterans, you have your homesteaders, you got your over sixty five. I mean, you know, you got all of that is changing, four to six percent, uh, issues. And that's the problem in setting millage for our budget. Because it's an estimate. It's an estimate of what revenue we're going to receive. Okay? We value, we take the value of the mill by, and this is the millage that we've asked for. And this is what we got in the bank. That doesn't count erosion. That's just what we got in the bank. But they're making projections based on variables. And in a reassessment year, it is really dramatic. Now, this year's probably going to be dramatic to good, as you mentioned. Because everybody's been selling houses and people have been buying houses at a high rate. So our assessed value is going to go up, which means the value of the mill is going to go up. But in a reassessment year, you make an estimate of how much can you reduce the millage rate to effect that a taxpayer doesn't really pay any more taxes. So that's, this millage rate goes down. But how much do you go down? Last time we had a reassessment, we underestimated, we, we didn't. The board did not, the district did not, the county, the folks that set the rate underestimated how much revenue a millage rate would provide us. And we ended up getting nine million dollars less than the millage rate that we expected. So, and the previous two millage rate reassessment years, we did the same thing. And it was five million one year and I think four point five the other year. So over eighteen million dollars, this district lost during the three reassessment years. Our challenge is we don't need to, we can't lose any money. Because what happens when we, when we get a loss of revenue, it comes out of our fund balance. And that draws our fund balance down. And that's what the credit agencies look at. So our challenge this year is to get just right. How much in a reassessment year is going to bring us the revenue that we expect based on the millage rate that goes to the county? Now, the thirty six point three, we're going to stay at thirty six point three. There's debt millage and, and then there's operational millage. That's, that's two different things. It's the operational millage that I'm concerned about. Because that's what, that's what really hurts us. So what do we do? Well, the only thing we can do as a board is to make sure that the county knows how absolutely essential to get the millage rate right. And to tell them, this is what we've learned in the last three reassessment years. Let's not do that again. Now, Tanya will tell you that the board made an estimate of what the millage rate should be. And it turned out, we were pretty much right, right on. So we're going to be going through the same process again. And we're going to need the board's support to make it very clear to the county, take our, take our budget, take our millage rate. Because there's, they're convinced, they're worried. And I talked to the auditor at this, uh, four years ago when this was going on. He said, if, if we get too much money, if you call, if we don't set the millage rate right and you get more than what you were budgeting for, we got to give a rebate to the taxpayers. No, we don't. And we had state revenue guy come in and tell us that if you do somehow get a little bit more than what the millage rate would bring in, you just apply that to the next year. That was not what was looked at at the previous reassessment year. They said, we want to get it just right so you get just exactly what you asked for. Well, nine million dollars is, is too much of a risk to take. We can't afford to have that risk. Because as Brian was telling you, credit is, is going to be a real issue coming, going forward. And we have a referendum going forward. So we have to keep our, our credit rating up. And we can't afford to have a deficit in the next couple of years. Because that can affect our credit rating. So I'm so glad that you came because that really helped us understand how complex this is. And I just ask that you consider and tell, tell the auditor and the treasurer that we look at what cash we get. And we're going to make an estimate based on that. And hopefully you'll, you will take our estimate.
If I may just quickly respond to that, um, we, I have, Dr. Rodriguez and I had a conversation with Eric Greenway on Monday. And we actually talked about rollback millage. And I asked, um, I asked for the opportunity, requested the opportunity to make sure that we have some input in that process. So whoever, Ms. Sanders does not do the rollback calculation. It's generally the finance office. Um, so, um, that's why I stood up here next to her knowing that she didn't have to answer that question. Um, so, um, we will be very involved. I've already talked to some folks at the State Department of Revenue as well, which they have to analyze the numbers and make, and verify the rollback calculations as well. So we will have a seat at the table, I want to reassure you. Um, we will do a second set of calculations. We'll confer with them and we will get to the right number. So, thank you. Mr. Smith?
All right, in terms of the presentation, just want to say thank you, uh, that definitely, uh, great information. Um, you, uh, you killed me when you said that, um, um, basically that we, we don't get taxes at the hospital. I was thinking, there goes a ton of money right there.
Well, when I say if it's considered a government entity, and I'm not talking about private hospitals.
Right.
If it's considered and it's under the list of the Department of Revenue and they listed as a hospital that needs to be exempted, we have a law, a list of them, we will exempt it. So you can go on to Beaufort Memorial and see whether or not it's exempt or not, if you want to know that. But if it's under that list and under a government one, like for example, in my county where I live, that's a privately owned hospital. And it may not be exempt. I have to look, I don't know what that situation is. But again, I say that because it's, it's actually on the laundry list of exempt items. Whether or not this one is exempt or not, I'll have to look at the record. But it's on that laundry list.
I believe that it, I believe that it is exempt. I think, I think Beaufort might be a non, uh, non, non-profit city that, that, yeah. But I was just thinking about, gee, that's, that's some good, that's some good money there. I don't know if it's a normal, but yes. And thanks for, thanks for the information, basically.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Sanders, for excellent presentation. Another thing that I, uh, you might have, I don't think you said this, but would also contribute to erosion and probably especially now with all the, uh, market turnover, is the cap of fifteen percent for the, uh, value of a home and that can, over the course of five years, correct? So that's going to, so really the taxable values are less than what they really should be. That would be one thing contributing to that. So that's another thing. And it's probably going to have a big effect this time around.
Can I make a, yes? Yes, it's a great comment, um, a great question, but question comment. It's the fifteen percent cap. What we found that the properties that did not transfer entries in twenty two, those are, they don't, they don't qualify for cap. Okay? Every one of those will get a cap. Now, what we're finding, again, I did that peekaboo into the numbers yesterday. And majority of our properties, I would say a majority, have gone up fifteen percent. Okay? So like the last quadrennial reassessment, not all the properties, it wasn't a majority that went up fifteen percent. This reassessment, because I'm going to give you the analogy, like I said, my taxpayer. If your property is valued at a hundred thousand dollars and now all of a sudden your neighbors want to start selling at a million, we're going to have in that market column a million dollars. But that hundred thousand dollar taxpayer who held on to their property from one reassessment to the next, they're going to be taxed at a hundred and fifteen thousand. So your market number is going to, can be substantially more than the taxable. Now, what happens in those scenarios that our taxpayers come in and say, well, why are they paying $1,000 and I'm paying $7? And then, and so we have to have those tough, those tough conversations. Say, well, the law says that in a condo assessment, the most that we can increase, the market value increases more than 15%, the most you can tax is a 15% increase. Okay, and so you can see that market number that is higher than taxable. But what we're finding historically in Buford is that they're not too far off. So like, in the past, you'll see, you'll see 48 billion and 45 billion relative. That's not bad. Because that means that the 45 billion is, billion is close to that 48. That's what we're getting taxed on. Is we're waiting to see what this one is going to be. We know we had a lot of people move here and bought property here. And those individuals, especially in '22, they're not eligible for the cap. But we do have a significant of individuals like yourselves who probably held on to your homes and lived in your house. And y'all will be benefiting, benefiting of the cap. Hope I answered.
Yeah, no, that's, those are good comments. Thank you kindly. Any other questions? And how about Mr. Dallas or Ms. Hay?
On my end, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Yes, no questions on my end either. Just appreciate the information.
Thank you. So, what should, so, 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 what is? Okay, so, Luch is not here yet, so, yeah, so it seems like we should continue on. I couldn't tell whether it was there or not. All right, so, now it's your turn.
I'm going to move on through. All right, we're going to switch gears and talk about the general fund budget. So it is still very early in the process as far as the numbers go. So today is a lot of conversation about the process, certain policies that the board has that guide us in our work for the budget, state law that guides us, and then sort of some internal guiding principles of our own that, that want us to make our way, make, build the budget in the most efficient way possible while meeting all the goals and, and state law as well. So, let's start with the calendar. This is a, so an abbreviated calendar, basically of our work. It's more of a working calendar. So we have distributed budgets to schools and departments. All of those are back. We've had staffing meetings with every principal. We've provided, we've done a budget update, a brief budget update with the board. We do have some preliminary state projections. But again, they are preliminary. They change every time there is a vote in the legislature, whether the House Ways and Means, the House, the Senate Finance. So I'll talk about where we are in that process as well. Then, we're at the point now where we've gathered majority of the data that we have so far. And we're vetting the budget to identify what areas might be duplicated, we might have missed, and then send some areas that we may need to trim back before things come to the board in order to meet the fund balance requirements and the balanced budget requirement. So we're doing that work now. I expect that we'll be continuing to meet weekly, at least with Dr. Rodriguez to work on that as we near the next work session where you will have all the numbers available to you at that time. So, when I talk about some of our internal principles on the next slide is basically a strategy that we use. So it's a combination of a financial strategy. And then when we get toward the end, it becomes a political strategy. So, so it's a combination that I didn't learn how to do political strategy in school. So that has been a learned behavior. I think all of us have had to undergo. But we'll, we navigate that each year a little differently depending on what our priorities are. So first of all, we're prioritizing our expenditure needs. We're helping, getting the help of our community and stakeholders to get that feedback. We have done the Bang the Table, as you know, which is the BCSD Connect on our website where we've gotten feedback there. Drawn out some guiding priorities that, from our community. And we are next, in the next week or so, I think it's in the next two weeks, we will be bringing together a student advisory council. So some high school students will be coming in and we'll having a budget session, feedback session with them as well. This will be our second annual student advisory budget meeting. And it was very successful last year. I think a few board members attended. And it was very enlightening, that's for sure. They were very eloquent in their requests and their desires for priorities in this budget. Then we match the revenues to the needs. We balance the budget, meaning revenues equal expenditures using no fund balance. That's the goal. We want to maintain a fund balance that's between 15 and 17%. And we want to minimize tax increases. So those are sort of our guiding principles. So specific board policies that are relating to fund, board relating to the budget are in OE, Operational Expectation 5. So there's, there are three main ones that I listed here, but there's other more specific ones. But the primary ones are the, primarily, we're maintaining a fund balance no less than 10% of budgeted expenditures, but a desired target between 15 and 17%. So, and then also, the goal of the fund balance is not to require a TAN, a Tax Anticipation Note. So we borrowed a TAN for at least 20 years that I've been with the district. So we, our desire is to move to the fund balance to a level that we would no longer need that TAN. The ESAR funds put a little more pressure on us to, to have, continue the TAN this past year, although our fund balance did rise by $7 million. We did have, we are having $2 million or to $3 million. And sometimes depending on, it could be as much as $6 million per month of spending in advance. And then we request reimbursement from the federal government. So that does put some pressure on us from a cash flow standpoint. And so we want to make sure, took a safety, a safe approach to our TAN this year and continued to borrow, we borrowed $7.5 million, which was about half of what we borrowed the previous year. So we're going to continue to monitor. But the goal ultimately is to eliminate that TAN. And I think that we're very close to being able to do that. South Carolina laws, up next, really, a balanced budget is basically, that's shorter term, but I think it's more specific in, the language is different. The superintendent shall not spend more than his available, than the available revenues. So basically, that means there will be a balanced budget. So, state law also constrains our budget by the millage rate increase. So each year, so we talked about 36.3 mills this morning. That was debt service. Then we have 125.6, 125.6 mills in the operations side. And so, been dealing with a lot of numbers, so I'm trying to get them all right in my head. So the state limits how much we can increase that millage. And that, that, that is dictated by the Department of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. And it comes in two pieces. And I think I talked about this the last time. But one portion, one piece of it is this Consumer Price Index that comes to us from the Department of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. And that number is, that percentage that's been given to us this year is 8%. The second amount is the growth based on U.S. Census data, which we do not have yet. So I hope that it will come at some point in April. And we're anxiously awaiting that. So, go back to the CPI. 8% CPI is the highest I've ever seen. It's typically in the 2% to 4% range. So that, just 8% will allow us at least another 10 mills available. So I think we have plenty available to do the things that we need to do. I'm not suggesting in any reason what that we, in any way that we utilize all of those. I, I, we certainly want to plan to gradually not have, like we talked about, the dips in valley, the peaks and valleys of taxes. We certainly don't want that in the operations fund as well. So we want consistent, either flat or slight increases going forward to support the operations of the district. calculation, the rollback is in, as Ms. Sanders mentioned, is in Section 12 of state law. It dictates the exact calculation and the method of calculation that can be done. I think there is some interpretation that can be made because of the erosion. The erosion is not addressed in state law. So I think that, that a prediction or a projection of that erosion must be incorporated into that calculation somehow. And so that's the thing that I'll be looking at and being most interested in as we move forward and get to that point. Also, and though it's not state law yet, a House bill, H4300, is the, is the budget bill, the general appropriations bill for '23, '24. And deliberations are currently in progress. So the, the budget has passed the House Ways and Means Committee, has moved to the full House, has been approved there. The House went on furlough. And this week, there were deliberations in the Senate Finance Subcommittee. So we are in process, but still have a ways to go.
All right, can you pause and we have some questions? Colonel Guyer?
Tanya, could you explain to the new board members what we get from the state? In other words, in this bill, H4300, it's going to say how much each student will get in state funding, correct?
Not exactly. It used to.
Yes. Explain, explain about what the state says and what we get. The differences.
Yes, I'm not sure I can, I probably should have put a, the formula for the new state funding formula here. So, back in the day, Education Finance Act formula, the EFA formula was the formula for primary state funding formula for students in South Carolina. It was based on a base student cost of, say, $2,500 per student, of which Buford got about 20, around 20% of those fundings because of our wealth in our county. So there's an index of taxpayability that it comes out from, I believe, the Department of Revenue. And we still receive that. And it establishes, it's based on assessed values of all the counties in the state. And we have one of the highest assessed values in the state. And so this index provides that the county, due to our wealth, is able to pay more of its fair, more of its share locally. And then therefore reduce, it reduces the amount of state funding that we've received from the EFA formula. So fast forward one year, we are now in a new funding formula. And it's based more on a teacher's salary. And it's a percentage, we would get the average teacher's salary per, for the number of, at a, basically a student-teacher ratio of 11.2. They came up with this number. And then we get a percentage of the state allocation, the total pot of money that's available as a percentage of, we get about 3% or 2.5% of the total allocation of the state. So I have to, I can bring that, the next time, bring you the details of that formula. It's very complicated. I'm still learning it myself as we're navigating it. And then the state puts in another 300 million that's then allocated again. So it's a, it's a complex formula that I, I don't know any CFOs in the state that know how to calculate it. We are totally relying on the calculations of the State Finance Office.
So. In, in addition, last year, when they were talking about the formula, Buford County was on that list for losing $1.5 million around that. There was a whole harmless year that was put into play. But, but it comes down to what Tanya was saying. And that's why we were losing that 1.5, right? And so, so we would be one of those counties. I think there were five counties in the state that were taking a hit, a hit, significant hit. Others were getting significant increases in it. But we were, we were taking a significant hit in that, in that new formula.
And one more thing that makes it complex is now they're simplifying our funding structure and moving, rolling funds into that state aid to classrooms pot. And it's very difficult to identify what is, what is the increase? Are we held, are we held the same? Are we getting more? And then you have the state mandates that are built into the budget, such as teacher's salary increases, health insurance increase for his retirement. And so it's almost impossible to figure out because, and then they split it between the EIA fund and the general fund. So it's a very complex thing that we're still navigating and trying to understand. But it appears that this, it, right now, it appears that about $6 million increase is what Buford will experience. But I think the state mandates are going to far exceed that value. So we are closely monitoring it. That pot of money that they're allocating is in total about $55 million. But that includes rolled up funds. They, they've rolled up five new funds this year out of special revenue into this pot as well. So we're having to navigate a very complex situation and to see, ultimately, we just put all the numbers in and see if we are able to, how much we're able to increase our expenditure. So I, I know that's complicated and, and it's just, it's as jumbled coming out as it is in my head, so.
Yeah, I wanted to say something. So I was going to touch upon what you just said, Dr. Rodriguez, that last year, the, we were one of the districts that was going to be funded less through the state and they had that held harmless. That's only for one year, correct? Yeah. And I remember when some of us went to the state Capitol last April, I believe it was March or April, Senator Davis specifically saying that this new fun, funding formula, the advantage to it is it, quote, "gives school districts more flexibility on how they can spend their, their money by lumping all these things together." But as you pointed out, Tanya, makes it very difficult to determine, you know, what is, what is the amount of revenue through the state going to be? And how does that compare to what we previously received from the state in years past?
I was just going to add, and ask Tanya to just comment on this. But usually, when there are requirements that are, that are given or dollars that are given for a specific purpose for noble and good initiatives, generally speaking, it doesn't cover the full cost of what it costs a district to implement, right? So, so we get a portion of the money, but it should, I mean, I want everybody to understand that, that it doesn't cover the cost of what it takes to implement it. So we're, we're then left looking for another way to fund the rest of that. Anything you want to add to that, Tanya?
No, that's pretty spot on. We do have, I mean, if we have a teacher's salary increase that's mandated at a certain level, we get a limited amount of funding. And we have to seek other revenue sources. And that may include a millage increase. And that's why it's fortunate that we have those available. But it is difficult to navigate the process knowing that we may need to increase taxes in order to just meet those state mandates.
Dr. Wozniowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Tanya, you mentioned a $6 million increase coming projected from the state. Is that from the state's projections or from our projections?
The state's projections. We have some preliminary numbers from the House project, it's a House projection. And so they are, that is from the latest projection.
Okay. Do you, when did you receive that?
I would say last week.
Okay. So a little different than the number that I received. Is I, I received a number that was 10.3 million on the House side for projections. So that's why I was asking. But mine dated like the 17th of the month. So I don't know if that's the same one you received.
And I'm referring to, to the general fund allocation. There may be something that's combining a couple of funds or EIA or something.
Right, and I certainly don't know all the revenue codes and things like that. So I'm not an expert. But I, I had seen, I think it was 10.3 million was the House projection. But we, as you noted, it changes. So, and the Senate might have a different projection. So I just wanted to see if I could get some clarification on when we got those numbers and when do we see additional projections from them? Like when will the Senate send us?
Whenever they, just whenever they. Finish their vote and then the State Finance Office has time to interpret that and apply it to their calculations. So we just got this last week in the House. But the House made a decision, I think, the week before. So they, relatively quickly, I would say, I don't know, I don't know exact timing of it, but.
But they turn it around to you guys, please.
Of getting of the Senate Finance version, or Senate Finance voting, we should have another allocation or another version of the projection.
So it's their process to go ahead and like get that out to you guys, correct?
Yes, the State Finance Office. Nancy Williams is the director.
Yeah.
And she receives, sends emails to us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Colonel Guyer.
But also, will we get the state mandates at the same time?
Well, we received the state mandates in an earlier update, but there are certain aspects of that communication that we're uncertain whether it's in this pot of money or in a different pot of money. And for example, there has been talk of teacher retention bonuses of $2,500. We were told that they were paid from nonrecurring funds. So, our question as a group of CFOs, Dorchester II, Greenville, and Spartanburg VII, and I, we're on a group chat, and we were all talking about the retention bonus. What are we, is this included in this, these allocations? And we believe the answer is no, because it is nonrecurring funds. These general fund appropriations is a recurring budget, and so we believe there's some type of one-time pot, a rainy day fund, or something at the state level that will allocate those retention bonuses if they choose to do that. I don't know, I have, we have not, we have searched, I have Cindy on our staff has been searching the bills and seeing if there's any talk about the retention bonus, there's been none. So, we haven't gathered any information, so there's unknowns, aspects of what is mandated and what is not at this point.
Mr. Smith?
Also, as Scrugg, you referenced that it would be, there could possibly be other revenue sources. What would those sources be?
Well, the options for, for the district, other than state revenue, would be local tax revenue.
And basically, local tax revenue would have to do it, if not, we don't have any other, other funding in terms of...
The only other source that I would say that we may have for one more year is indirect costs coming from our SRF funds. And so, it looks as if we may be able to move a portion, a small amount in, it's not small, but amount in that would support the budget, so I'm estimating about $2.5 million at this point. But we also have growth in the millage, so we are experiencing a time where we have, we're getting more tax revenue than the tax revenue that we're seeing in our, in our bank accounts, as Mr., Colonel Guyer mentioned earlier, is, appears to be exceeding our budget in revenues. So, that's a good thing. So, that means the value of the mill is a little more than we projected. So, we're going to see some growth in that current millage of 125.6, and so that will be additional revenues for us, combined with the state revenues, combined with the indirect cost, and then we have opportunities for potentially looking at additional millage if the board desires.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we might move on to the fund balance. So, since the board policies refer in several places to the fund balance, I thought it was important, particularly with a few new board members, that it was important to touch on this and the importance of the fund balance. Basically, the fund balance represents the net cash reserves after all the revenues are deposited and all their expenses are paid in our general fund. So, all the tax revenue comes in, all the state revenue comes in, we spend monthly on our salaries, benefits, services, and so on, and at the end of the year, we determine what is the net increase or decrease in, because of revenues or expenses, what is the excess? Among those two, they're netted together, and that determines whether there's an increase or decrease in the fund balance. So, it's sort of like the net profit. But in terms of a person, an individual, it's sort of, it basically represents cash in the bank minus, plus or minus some receivables or some bills that maybe due. So, it's, it's a, in, it's very important to have a healthy fund balance, and there's a number of reasons. One, we have to have cash on hand, and there are certain times, and I might flip, if we could, to the next slide. This slide is a, is a depiction of our cash flows, and I don't show it here, but basically, it's, I didn't want to make the slide too busy. The district spends about $25 million a month in salaries, benefits, and other services and supplies. We receive about $1 million a month until we get to November and December. December, the tax bills are due January 15th, we begin to see a trickle of tax revenue come in there, but the bulk of it is in December and January. So, as you can imagine, we spend $25 million a month, but we get virtually nothing until we get to December. So, we have, we get to a point where we're dipping below the zero line, where, which means that's how much cash in the bank that we have. This is the cumulative cash. So, we have to have a tax anticipation note to support us during that hardest time if our, our fund balance, our cash reserves, is not sufficient enough. So, we currently have a $57 million fund balance. We are, if not there, or we're very close to a point where we're able to not have a tax anticipation note. So, we will do the cash analysis, like Mr. Nurek mentioned earlier, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, to determine if we'll need one. Hopefully, we won't, but that is very important to know that our cash reserves get really tight, and we have to really watch them very, very closely to make sure that we're making payroll without bouncing checks or doing anything that's would cause disruption in the district. So, also during that time, just think about the timeframe, and what is a big risk during that timeframe, August, September, October, November, hurricanes? So, we want to make sure we have cash reserves to be able to manage things, or have the ability to quickly borrow, as Mr. Guyer mentioned earlier, if the need arose. Now, just for those of you who, Hurricane Matthew, I'm not sure what year it was in, it was before you got here.
Six years.
I did not bring it.
October 8th, 1916. Fortunately. Reduce any, any anxiety you may have over it. The county did the bulk of the work, they removed trees, they removed, so the only real responsibilities we had were removing trees from buildings, perhaps a playground structure and that sort of thing, but they paid for and financed the entire process, very expensive process of clearing roads and bridges and all of those things. So, we had a very relatively small responsibility, and they took a very large piece of the responsibility. So, I think that our risk is a little lower, but we certainly do want to have reserves in place just in case.
You know, Kershaw County, two years ago, had a tornado, came through, wiped out one or two schools in Kershaw County, right? And so, it impacted them significantly. So, Tanya didn't know this, but part of being a CFO is also being a meteorologist, and, and you know, you do have to plan for those things, right? Because you never, you never know. And that's why, I know you know this, but the fund balance is important to us, not just for those moments in time, but the valley that she's speaking of in, in December there. I'm sorry, October.
Colonel Guyer?
One other thing I want to mention is, this tax anticipation note is a bond, but it's not paid for out of our debt service, so that the interest that we have to pay on this short-term loan comes out of the same pot of money that pays teacher salaries. So, now, it's not, it's not separate, it's the one debt that we have that comes out of operations. So, when you talk about it, you're really saying, well, that's $50,000 in interest that we could have used in a classroom. That, that's another cost.
The other thing, just, just to think about, right? I mean, there's, there's a lot of benefit and a lot of convenience for the system and for parents, on the community in general, when you have cluster sites, such as the Bluffton Cluster, or such as, you know, we have, we have the opportunity for in May River, right? Or Hilton Head Cluster, right? But a tornado on one cluster site, it's not just going to affect one school, right? It's going to affect multiple campuses, you know, most likely, right? So, I mean, those are just, you know, will branch middle, will branch out, you know? So, anyway.
Mr. Smith?
Within, within, within this cash flow, do you project any shortfall?
Um, not as long as, well, we already issued the TAN. We already paid back the TAN in February, so no, no, sir. We have tax revenue we've just collected. My next slide will show that we just collected $172 million in tax revenue. So, we are, from a cash flow perspective, in a healthy position right now.
And also that part, could you explain what shortfall, what shortfall is?
Uh, well, it depends on what you're, how you interpret that, or what you're referring to. When I, when I, in my responses, I interpret it as a lack of cash flow, so not having enough money in the bank to pay the, pay the bills.
Right, just for, for the purpose, so someone's watching, they're wondering what the, what that is, I just wanted, thank you. Uh, that's it, thank you.
So, as part of our work, we also, we closely monitor local tax revenues. So, this is for the, well, the far right column is the current year. I always like to, we actually have about 20 years of columns, so I try to condense that down to fit on a slide that should be actually read here. But it's also really, because history, history repeats itself oftentimes, so I like to compare where we are in this year to previous years. So, I included 2018, 19 for the purpose of, that was the last reassessment. You'll see that that year, we, in the far left column, we collected 127.2 million as of this point in the year. Of course, our millage was different. Ultimately, we collected only 93.5% of our tax budgeted revenues that year, $9.3 million shortfall. So, that shows what we were talking about earlier. So, that's what we're going to work toward, not having to repeat, have history repeat itself. And so, as I jump to the far right column, we have collected as of this point, 96.5% of the $178 million budget. We have about $6 million left to collect in the months, and we don't have, there was a technical difficulty at the county, so we weren't able to get February's tax revenue this week. And so, but we're basically collecting $1 to $2 million for the remaining months of the year. So, relatively, so it's relatively easy to project. 96.5 is higher than any of the other percent of collections. At this point in the year, it's higher than any of the last five years. So, we do, as I mentioned earlier, we are seeing collections at a higher rate. Our revenues are higher than our projection, or the projected revenues, we believe will receive at least $10 million more, and so we believe that that tax revenue will end up over the projected budget amount. And so, that's in our favor. The district doesn't have the ability to spend those funds without any board approval. We have no plans to come forward for additional expenditures at this time, but I just know that we are in a good, good position, and that places us able, sets us up to project for the next year based on the current mill rates that we're experiencing. So, it does allow us some additional mill revenues in our budget to help support the next year's budget. I mentioned the legislative process earlier, so we have made our way from the top left-hand corner. The House Ways and Means Committee has passed the budget, full House has passed the budget. Now, we're, the Senate Finance Committee, or subcommittees, one of those, are working on the budget. Then, when it is passed in full, in the Senate Finance, we'll move to, down in the lower-left quadrant, to the full Senate, and if they pass, it will, this probably oversimplifies the process, but I just wanted to give you some idea, that it would go to the governor's desk if passed. If there is some question or disagreement with the original version or major change, it would go then to a conference committee that is made up of members of the House and the Senate. And then, after those differences are worked out, then it would go to the governor and ultimately signed into law. So, that's just a brief depiction of this, in every box that you see up here, we get another projection of our revenues and, and often changes from one time to the other. So, we have, so we're about halfway through that process, and we'll be getting updates, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. And so, just wanted to, when we talked about, my team and I, I wanted to mention Jennifer Hamblin is also, is our budget director, I wanted to mention her as well today, Louis Ackerman, Cindy Phillips, and Lori Mock as well, who handles mostly our audits and arbitrage and making sure payroll is, doesn't miss a beat. And so, just so you know, payroll was not affected by the internet audages today. So, that's a good thing. But this team is amazing, and they keep us in line, on track, on target, and when we talked about what are our challenges, we could probably go on for days on this. But the timeline of the legislative process is an issue because we're getting revenue information so late, it's hard, and but there are time constraints, especially with county, as we back up the timeline, you start June 30th, you've got to back up three county council meetings and at least one board meeting, and then you're in the beginning of May or end of April. So, as you can understand, if they're not making final decisions until end of May or into June, it causes a real problem for us. We're having to make projections based on what we think we're going to get at the end of the legislative session. So, if the timing of that was earlier, or they could even do a two-year budget process, that would even be magical, but unfortunately, we, it just continues to be a challenge for us. That process presents unpredictable revenues for us. The calculation, the rollback millage is going to be a challenge this year, our shift from 6% to 4%, that erosion is going to be a challenge. The state funding model, I've listed that as a challenge, as that's changed in how, how we verify the information the state's giving us, and how we understand it, and actually, what it, what's included in it. Unfunded or underfunded mandates, that is an issue, and a teacher's salaries would be an example. And then continued inflation and increased costs. So, we're seeing a lot of our contracts and things, you know, people need to move wages up in order to compete the market and get, get employees and, and staff. Supply chain delays, we're continuing to see those, maybe not at the same level, but we do see them particularly on large industrial items like HVACs, or refrigeration, or that in those particular areas, but all construction areas are continuing to see those delays as well. And then interest rate changes. That makes us a little nervous in the bond market, but fortunately, we don't need to issue any bonds right away, other than some smaller, well, we will be coming forward on the 8% bond, but for the most part, any, if we, if we have a potential referendum, there would not be a need to issue a major bond until the spring. So, that is, that will give us some time for hopefully the, the market to stabilize. So, I mentioned earlier that, Mr. Smith mentioned, what, what revenues do we have available to us? One of the available revenue sources is a millage, and millage, we, the, I mentioned that the state has limitations on the amount that we can go with in millage, but we also have what's called a look-back millage. So, you can, you can have an available millage. This year, right now, we have an 8% ability to grow in the millage, which equals 10 mills. But we also have millage that we didn't use last year. So, last year, our available millage was 8.7, and we used four mills. So, there are 4.7 mills remaining from last year. Then we add on the 10 mills that might be available this year, plus any that may come for growth when we get that, and so we're going to have at least 14.7 mills available to this district to increase if, if we choose, if the board chooses to do that. Of course, I'm not recommending any particular millage or an increase at all at this moment and, or any amount, and certainly wouldn't recommend going, taking all of that. We do want to set ourselves up, as we do in the debt service, we want to plan for the future. We're able to have a three-year lookback, so you think about what another year or two might look like. Is CPI going to be at that same level? Is growth going to be at that same level? Maybe not. And so, I always... And so I always like to keep some in reserve. So I want to make sure that we are keeping some look-back millage in reserves in case of emergency. And we did use all of our lookback the year after the $9.2 million shortfall. Uh, we were, so it was a nine-mill reduction, uh, that year. The look-back millage was moved back nine mills, lowered, and we had a $9 million shortfall. The following year, we increased nine mills and broke even again. So we were, we did have to exhaust all of the lookback that we had. Fortunately, we had it available. Um, so we, it is always a safety net to be able to make sure there is some in reserves and available to the district to allow us the flexibility to do things that, um, to meet certain priorities or needs of the district. So the next steps for, oh, yes. Earl.
Uh, yes. Um, if the 6% were to go way down to the point where, um, would, would the state, do you need more money from the state?
No, sir.
How, how will we fund education?
So first of all, we're going to prevent that, hopefully prevent that from happening at all, uh, or at least our, our plan for the potential for aggressive 6% moves to 4%. So that we expect in years of reassessment that that erosion is deeper than, than we would normally have in a normal year. And so I have information from the treasurer's office of what historically that erosion has been, the shift from six to four over several years. And I've been talking to them about, about that. And so what I'm going to be doing is an analysis of, um, that erosion. What, what sort of pattern are we seeing in previous years? And particularly what pattern are we seeing in a reassessment year? And so with, with such huge growth, I would expect that there will probably be even more than what occurred four years ago. And so I think it's just a matter of projecting or predicting what that erosion is going to look like and making sure our millage is set in a way that prepares us, prepares us for that. Mr. Smith?
Um, just a quick question, uh, and in terms of your budget challenges, I was going to ask you, um, and in reference to the guy from South Carolina who made the mistake of the $3.5 billion, will that affect us in any way or will it not?
So I think that was more on a financial presentation and not actually cash-related. I don't know the details about what error was made, but from my understanding, it was more of a misstatement of their financial information. So, um, information that wasn't reality. So, um, my, based on that, I say no, that would have no effect on us.
Thank you.
Colonel Guyer?
One thing that we've got to be aware of, for the previous 10 years or so, we've been running inflation at about 1% to 2% a year. And this year, we got a big spike. We have to cope with that because that doesn't ever get easier. If, for example, we had 8% inflation, but we only increase our overall operation budget by 6%, that puts us at minus two bogey. Inflation is likely to stay between 3% and 5% for the next five to 10 years. If you don't keep up, in three or four years from now, you'll find yourself 6% and 7%, 10% below inflation. And then you've got a, well, a big tax increase to catch up again. Taxpayers don't like big tax increases. Tax, taxpayers understand inflation, so you keep up a little at a time so you don't fall behind. And we're going to have to do that this year because of the inflation. Hopefully it won't stay at this high level, but we've gone from one to 8% inflation in one year. That's significant. And so we have to be aware of that.
And our next steps. So we, as we, um, move forward, we will continue to seek input from the community in, in the student advisory meetings, and we have some public forums coming up as well. Uh, monitor local tax revenues, monitor the current and future revenues. Legislative updates, we're keeping in touch. Uh, we get updates regularly from, I think I get copied on the School Board Association updates that you all probably receive. I also get one from my School Business Official Association. Uh, and then we're actively, we have the Legislature app on our phones and they alert us on certain bills that are having updates and our legislators are sponsoring. So if you don't know about that, there is a South Carolina Legislature app and, uh, most of you, I'm sure, know that. And you can follow certain bills or follow certain members of Senator House. So that's very helpful in our work as well. Um, and then we're just going to continue the budget preparation and prepare for the next meeting, uh, which will be our work session on April 21st. Uh, we will come with all the numbers as we always do, uh, some more of the details and then begin to have those discussions, uh, with board on the, on the numbers. Uh, just want to point out, we are having public forums, uh, in person on April 26th and 27th. The first one being, uh, Lufton High School, second being Beaufort High School. Um, and the goal is to approve the budget by no later than May 16th. That would fall in line with the county council readings. Um, so first reading would actually be May 22nd, so it would be followed that. Prior to first reading, we do, we are asked to go to County Council's Finance Committee to have a briefing of what's in the budget. Uh, of course, it won't be certified by, at that time, um, but we, we will have a good idea of what the budget, um, will look like at that point. So first reading, tentatively scheduled May 22nd, second reading, June 12th and June 26th. And, uh, last year, we, we were wildly successful, um, with the budget process. We had some, a few public speakers that came to the board meeting and then ultimately came to county council and supported the budget. We had a lot of teachers present. And that volume of support really says a lot, uh, in those meetings and I think goes a long way. So I would encourage, um, viewers or board members or staff members to come to those. If, if this, just the presence of a large number of people in support of schools, um, set, just beats volume. So with that, I'll be happy to take any other comments or questions. Dr. Wizniewski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have just a handful. Um, so I'm looking at the slide titled Current Year Local Tax Revenues. Um, and something that I think that would be helpful for new board members and myself to refresh my screen over the last few years, is what the mills were those years. So I, I think in past presentations, it's been like under the year, um, in that top, uh, horizontal pane. But I think that would be useful just so that we can see how any changes occurred and match that up with excessive shortfall and things like that. Um, my other question, you mentioned the fund balance is presently at $57 million. Um, something else that I think would be helpful is just on these presentations, if we have that percentage, if we have that policy, just to know where are we falling in line with that policy? I know we're healthy and we're, we're doing well.
And the percentage depends on the next year's budget. And we, since we don't have the next year's budget number yet, that, that, the percentage is in limbo.
Okay.
We couldn't take it as a percentage of the current year expenditure, so that is something we know now.
A comparative is kind of what I was looking for. Um, can I have another one? And so in looking at the calendar, it has that the superintendent and staff will look at the, um, the review of the budget in early April. And then I also see, you know, we've got an April 4th meeting and then I think it's April 21st. So will we see, um, the results of those meetings at the April 21st meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Want to confirm that? And one pretty word that I know we've talked about before in the past is slippage. When is that assessed or looked at or discussed in terms of the budget?
We've already discussed it. Well, we, it all depends on the vacancies. And so we're looking at how many vacancies, uh, we've been able to fill this year and how many, uh, alternative, you know, there may have been alternate, um, spending as a result, perhaps teachers, uh, the vacancies were filled, but teachers may have had an additional class that they taught during their planning period. So that is going to, coming out of the same pot. So, um, the payment for teaching additional classes. So we have to look at it not just as what was vacant, but what additional spending do we have in that category? So we won't have as much slippage as we had last year because our salaries are up, our vacancies are down. Um, and so we will have to compress that number some. So we won't be able to, that will be, um, uh, fewer, I don't know, it's just a less, um, there'll be more expenditures than the previous year when I'm not taking a, a slippage number that's as large. That's kind of complicated. But, um, basically, we're not going to be able to take the amount of slippage that we did in the past. I would imagine at least half.
But we will see it on a future presentation.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
How about Ms. Hay or Mr. Dallas?
Nothing here, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Same here.
Okay. You're welcome. Mr. Smith?
Uh, also, uh, in, in, in terms of, just to ask one of the questions, uh, refer back to, uh, did you make the, did you say that the, that there was a date that the superintendent and staff would look over the budget?
Um, it was in the presentation, there was a couple of different calendars in there, but one of them said that in early April, they were going to be reviewing the budget. And Tanya mentioned that that would be when they were looking at, you know, program things and expenses.
Right. And, and my, and my question for that is, you said early, early, uh, April, uh, and so my question was, uh, pardon, my question was just, uh, once y'all get them looking at that. The, the question, the question, my question is, uh, once y'all get them, uh, how soon could you possibly get it to the board so that we can start looking at it as well, to start to digest the information?
Uh, we have, uh, set to get to the board, uh, with the budget on April 21st.
Right. And, and, and I, and I see that, I, I understand that. But I would say if y'all are meeting on the April 4th.
Yeah, but it's not a one-meeting thing, right? It's just something that we, like, they'll present it to me and then I've got to mull it over, I've got to work through it, I come back to them, they work on it tomorrow. We go back and forth for a while before we get you a completed budget. So our date to get you a completed budget to look at is April 21st. We're giving you some timelines here on what, on what we do, but, but I don't, I don't just get it, look at it in our meeting and say, go for it, right? I mean, we've got to, we've got to, like, dig into it and that kind of stuff and do our due diligence on it, I think, is, is the best way to say it.
Okay. Okay, okay, um, okay.
I know what you're trying to get at though, is how quickly could we get it to you? We feel April 21st is, is the right time to get us the opportunity to do that due diligence.
Right.
Yeah. I think that's what you're asking, right? How quickly, right? Yeah, we think April 21st is the, is the fair time.
I won't, I won't push it back. Thank you.
All righty. Um, thank you kindly, Tanya, for your presentation and for your staff being here. So if you look on page two of our agenda, we have a 30-minute lunch break when appropriate. I think this would be appropriate time for that. It is now 12:32, so we will reconvene at 1:02.
Good afternoon. We will now resume the Beaufort County Board of Education Work Session of March 24, 2023. Next agenda topic is innovative education delivery models with focus on high schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Cushingberry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Wadson, board members, I appreciate this opportunity of coming forward with points for conversation, points for you to think in the future, points, as I just shared with Colonel Guyer, to my colleagues, ideas on how to spend the money. So I'm going to go forward with just a few points on this presentation. Uh, Mrs. Cushingberry, if you can go to slide two. I'd like to start this presentation with definition of innovation in education. Is always seeking knowledge that will support new and unique ideas and instruction, and instructional techniques that will reach the students in more effective and exciting ways. If we can go to, then I want you to keep the idea with you as I just go through this brief presentation. I use that lens for the Beaufort, pro public Beaufort graduate. I know you are familiar with this already. But I'd like to take you to the next slide, which is slide four. Here in slide four, actually, it takes into a different perspective. That is, we're looking at developing education and what we do as a system. What I'm putting forward is the opportunity of thinking from the ground up of who are our stakeholders, completing a needs assessment of our stakeholders, which kind of this is a goal or the what? From that, going forward and identifying the next level, um, which takes me to the how. And if we look at the four pillars, and yes, people in my division, as we worked on this, and I would have had them here, but the subject to the internet, I shipped the personnel at home to do, to do their work. We have four pillars. One is, first one is literacy. And when I put forward literacy, it's not just the alpha, the A, the B, the Cs, but it's the literacy, technoliteracy, echoliteracy, numeracy, the process of inquiry, literacy. Your next pillar is actually HOS. And I know it's a new acronym for some of you, but that stands for you studying of humanities, arts, and social sciences. Building the capability of our students. In other words, understanding what man has made and what else man can create. And I mean man as a collective noun, not to any specific gender. Your next pillar actually is STEM. Thank you. Where we have science, technology, engineering, and math. Commonalities in all of us, and I want to just start at the very beginning of that, is to get at science. When I said to you, the science, the literacy of, what does science look like for young students? Do we develop our students to be observers, those who could then create a question and then build a new research tied to that question that also shows their proficiency in standards? And I'm just throwing those questions at you as we talk about innovation. And obviously, the last pillar that I'm sharing here, there with you is career technical education, with that we have student achievement. And above that overall, our goal is to have productive citizens into our community. Wrapped around that is our continuous improvement model, act, plan, do, check. In other words, what we do and what we develop. We just don't do it, but do we monitor change continually, plan it, and seek to improve ourselves or what is sometimes referred to as CAESIN. May we go to the next slide, please? So then when I started looking at renovation was facilities perspectives. These next three slides are just, hey, schools in the world. High Tech USA is one. If we go to the next slide? I am going to pause at this one because it actually reminds me of the Guggenheim, so it took me there for a few moments in time. And also another museum that used to look like this in West Palm, which was in Orton. But creating environments that engage our students to go forward and be creative. Again, innovation, where do we land? Is it thought, is it practice, is it building capacity of our educators? Or is it reframing how we produce what we do as a system? Will we go to the next slide? High Tech Academy. Where the production and work of the young minds actually started in elementary on focusing on technology and taking them through to middle and high school. I want to share that one commonality that these three schools have is project-based learning. So let me drive the bus to that. So let me drive the bus to that. Back to the question of creating students who are scientists, who go out in the environment and observe, create a question of inquiry, and then go forward and creating product as a result of this. Where a teacher provides a rubric to say, demonstrate your knowledge and skill. So is that only one of the areas of innovation? As I shared with you, as I started this one-person conversation, these are just thoughts. These are things for us to have an idea about. If we can go to the next slide, please? So what I'm sharing here are the most current seven top innovations in education today. If you were able to have this as a handout or as a link to you, each one of these are hyperlinks that will take you to some research with regard to each one of these areas. It also correlates a lot of this to the seven, you know, the 14 challenges in engineering. Now, really, what are we developing, our children, our students, our young adults? In order to be competitive, and I'm going to quote somebody who uses it here amongst each of you, not for tomorrow, but for three, five, 15 years from now. If we can go to the next slide? So, and in this presentation, actually, has been ripped apart by many in my division, so. And I have to say that because we create, we take it apart, we put it back together. But our goal is, where we land is building, building students' appetite. Let that apostrophe do apologize, appetite for the following items. Advanced personalized learning. Make solar energy, energy economical. Enhance virtual reality. Reverse engineering the brain. What does that look like? I don't, God, I will not tell that to a doctor. But the impact of stroke, the TIA. Engineering better medicines. Advancing health informatics. Restore and improve urban infrastructure. We haven't, as a nation, we haven't had a role of fixing our infrastructure since post-World War II. Secure cyberspace. Provide access to clean water. That's within our own country. Provide energy from fusion. Manage the nitrogen cycle. Develop carbon sequestration. Engineering tools of science discovery. And there are many other topics. These were just some that we spoke about as a group in my office. We can go to the next slide, please? So as I shared with you, it was just an opportunity to give some ideas for future discussion. As we. As we go forward as a system together, I just wanted to put forward some ideas to you as our board members and actually, leaders here in the system. So questions, and I don't want you to know what I wrote next to that. Future answers.
Ingrid.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stratus. This is a conversation that I've been kind of waiting for since I got on the board. And it's something that, you know, we had COVID, we've had learning loss. We just haven't gotten to it. And I'm kind of bringing it forward because to me on the board, something that's very important is that we kind of set expectations of what direction we want the district to go and what we want them to prioritize within the community. And really, I've been having conversations for the last 10 years with people as my kids have gone through the education system, with parents, with administrators, with colleges, with people from all over the country about, you know, what are you doing in your schools? And what, what kind of job are you preparing for? And it's been really interesting. And I want to share the most recent ones that I had. I was talking, I've been thinking a lot about STEM and physics and computers and math and those sort of harder sciences because there's a shortage of teachers. And the prediction is that it's going to continue to get worse. It's very difficult, even with the substantial pay increases we've offered teachers to compete. When if you have a PhD in math, there's just a lot of jobs you can now do from anywhere in the world and make more money. So the prediction is, is that those very necessary skills are going to have fewer and fewer teachers. So I was, I had this kind of on my mind, and I was up at Northwestern University visiting my son and decided to get my hair done. So I was at the Northwestern place, and the person next to me was talking. And it turns out, he was a PhD in physics, who was a professor at the McCormick School of Engineering. So we got to talking about, you know, what students, how they're coming out of high school, what he's seeing as graduate-level engineering programs. And it came, the topic of AP physics came up. And he said, you know, AP physics is fine because AP physics is content-based with a big exam at the end that you can get credit for. He's like, but it's not really preparing kids for engineering school. They need entrepreneurial, project-based, experiential learning. And I think that especially post-COVID, this idea that, you know, schools of the future will have kids sitting seat hours and having yearly assessments to determine whether or not they progress. I think that's becoming an outmoded, and I think the pandemic really sped up that transformation. I think it was already becoming less of a, you know, standard. And now it's really, parents are questioning, what, what do I need to do to get my kid ready? Not only to go to college or to have a career if they're going to do something in the K industry, but to be successful adults, right? So when I look at where public education nationwide is, I feel like we're, the public education is a little bit slow to adapt to the changes. And then that's understandable. But I do feel like Beaufort County School District has done a good job. I know we already have gotten some exemplary statuses from various organizations in terms of some of the leadership. But I do feel like Beaufort County could lead South Carolina with our resources in looking at more innovative ways to meet parents. And there's other parents on the board, so I'm interested in their feedback. But as, you know, as a parent, what I see is that parents, and we saw this at the SIC meeting from what I could hear online, you know, they want internships and apprenticeships, they want experiences, they want us to leverage technology. Maybe we have more virtual learning, maybe we have a different model of virtual learning. We have to adapt to the fact that I think teacher shortages are here to stay, at least for the foreseeable future. And that's something that's going to take a long time to recover from. So I was at Career Day at Hilton Head High School yesterday, and I was trying to get kids excited about data science. Wish it went okay. But I introduced them the concept of artificial intelligence. And I'm like, do you guys understand what that is? It's not robots, it's not Terminator, it's not, you know, it's kind of like, this is an actual thing that is now very active in our world. And here's how we create it, and here's what this means. And I was sharing that with them. So one of the experiments I put in, and this is where I have three computers going, and none of them are working. I put into the ChatGPT AI a question. And I said, what skills will high school students need in the future? And they said, as technology advances and the tech, job market evolves, high school students will need to develop a wide range of skills to succeed in the future. Some of the most important skills that high school students will need include digital literacy, how we deal with data, digital platforms, digital tools. Critical thinking, how do we apply content? Since content is no longer, content mastery is not as critical with AI and Google mastery, how will we apply that? Collaboration, how will we work with others globally? Communication, and we see this now, I hear this from PhDs and professors in colleges all the time, who say that kids are brilliant scientists, can't write a paper to save their lives, can't communicate their breakthrough findings. Problem solving. And it's not just science, that's entrepreneurial business. How are we going to solve problems? Adaptability, creativity, and emotional intelligence. And those are all, those are different than the skills that we've had historically when I was a kid. That was not the highlight. So what I was thinking about is, I do think that the public school model was originated during agrarian period of time. That's why we have summers off, right? So that we could help with the harvest, which, you know, seems less important in 2023. Most countries in the world don't have three months off. We also, a lot of our assessment models were based on SMART goals, which is actually in our results section of our coherent governance. SMART goals were invented in 1954 by a guy named Drucker. And they have kind of fallen by the wayside in the last 10 to 20 years. They're still obviously used. But businesses like Google, Amazon, apparently Anheuser-Busch, but, you know, just either Disruptor or School, or businesses are trying to adapt to its future environment and how our children and millennials and that group of people interact with the world. Like Rachel was just saying, we're talking about grocery stores. She's like, oh, I go to Instacart. And I think that's how my kids think about. My kids will never go to a bank, inside of a bank. My kids are unlikely to ever send a letter with a stamp. You know, there's just been a lot of changes. So when now, I was reading an article from, and I know this is a lengthy wind-up, but I'm bringing it to a point. I read an article from MIT Sloan about, they looked at how SMART goals are not as effective anymore, right? And that they, we, in the digital world and in the technology-centered world, we need fast goals. I love how they, these metrics. Frequent, ambitious, specific measure goals and transparency. And that is how these other industries that are succeeding and thriving in this environment and that are not JC Penney and are not Sears, right? That they are using more of these fast goals. So when I looked at our results section, because I was wondering why we haven't gotten to start talking about the things that kind of excite me about how are we going to teach arts education, right, in this environment? How are we going to do KATE? How are we going to do, and what KATE projects are we going to, sorry, KATE industries are we looking at? How are we going to do STEM and advanced learning in the, with the teacher shortages? And when I look at our results section of our coherent governance manual, stand by while I wake up my iPad. The only thing I've got, got it on, okay? It was one of the few websites I was allowed to get on this morning. What we have is, we have that our measures, we have three sections. Academic achievement, teacher recruitment and retention, and finances. And what it says here is that, oh, shoot. It says that to be successful, we should be effective in these three categories. Then what we have as measurements for these three categories, essentially, the academic achievement is pretty much SC Ready, which is literacy and math for grades K through eight. And then the EOCs in biology, history, whatever. And that's it. That is the only results that we are focusing on from our coherent governance manual. And there's nothing in here about advancing art education. There's nothing in here about advancing digital literacy. There's nothing in here about how we're using technology. And so to me, when I think about, Carlton, this is for you. When I think about what success looks like from a school district perspective, those things are essential to me. That in addition, not instead of, but in addition to improving our, you know, competency at SC Ready and improving our scores and those things, that we're also looking at, how are we educating kids in 2023? How are we providing, you know, advanced physics to every kid in Beaufort County? Whether you're in the Whale Ranch Cluster or in the Beaufort Cluster and Hilton Head Cluster? Because we're not going to have six advanced physics teachers on a regular basis. How are we providing KATE education south abroad? There's no school choice. So if you want to do something, you're a Hilton Head student, and you want to go to May River for a KATE project, a program, can't do it. So you are absolutely bound to whatever KATE programs are offered by your high school. So that was my big wind-up for this tiny pitch. I would like to ask that the board direct, the results committee, full disclosure, I'm chair of it, to look at expanding our results section of our coherent governance to include those skills that I think are essential for success for today's students. Madam, thank you. Oh, should I make a motion? Should I go and make a motion? I'd like to, okay, I'd like to move that the Board of Education, it's kind of weird because I'm the chair, but I'd like to move that the Board of Education direct the results committee to review and potentially expand the results for academic achievement.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you actually, wait a second, hold on for a second? Yes, now we can, there's a motion.
Motion, then it's, yeah.
Okay. Were you going to speak next?
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Stratus. Ingrid, I do agree with you with the fact that Beaufort County can lead the way, especially when it comes to STEAM education, the whole KATE umbrella. I was one of a handful of Project Lead the Way teachers when I started here in 2012, and that program has expanded. Every time I hear Project Lead the Way from K through 12, I get excited because I trained during the summer. It wasn't, well, when I walked into the classroom, it was like, here, take this manual, learn it all. And I taught design and modeling, robotics, and medical detectives. And it was all project-based learning. And I can tell you this, I know for a fact, I have four students that took every class that I taught, that they're now in engineering schools. So it works. And I believe that we just need to continue to do project-based learning throughout the buildings because that's how kids learn. I had teachers that would come to me and say, well, how do you get them to do work for you? I said, because I'm cool. No, because what I taught was fun. And they could apply math, science, reading, English, to all of it. And they had to write papers, they had to stand up and present because the one thing that I've noticed working right now, because I mean, the young people don't have soft skills. And those skills need to be taught. And a lot of the big industry people are saying that they need soft skills. They can't sit behind these phones and text all day or sit on social media. They need to pick up a phone and call and talk to people and know how to write letters and memos and emails with the proper capitalization and punctuation. So we definitely need more project-based learning and more teachers that are willing to do those things. And my kids were able to do things within the community because we have projects. I had, at one point, six robotics teams. I had, what, three First Lego League teams and three VEX teams that competed at the same time. At one point, Pat Frager was going in one direction with some teams, and I was going in another direction with some teams. Pat was the principal at that time, at London Middle. But that's how they applied what they learned. And that was very, very important. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Gordon?
You're, I thought you wanted to speak.
No, I'm sorry. Ms. Boatright, I think I heard what you said. And I just want to be clear, if I vote on something, that I understand what you're asking of us. So you're asking that the results committee do what, please, ma'am?
So under, one of the three core goals that have already been identified, there's one for academic achievement, that we keep what we have and expand it to include areas like arts. And this, I'm not saying what, because it's, it's the committee, and you're on that committee, by the way, we would be talking about would be, you know, what other metrics and ambitions do we have for this district? What other goals, if we walk, if, what I want to do is, I've got, what, a year and eight months left on the board, right? If I walk away from the school board after my term, would I want to feel like I got accomplished? And so for me, I mean, one of my big, and I'm just going to, you know, it's National Music Educators Month, so plug to them, but it's arts education. And that's not encompassed anywhere in our results, which is supposed to drive what we do through our operational expectations. So I would like to, I'm not saying I have an agenda or a plan. I have 10 years of conversations in my database. But I want to talk to other board members and say, like, what else can we do here in Beaufort County? So it's just asking the board to allow the results committee to look at that and have those conversations.
All right, next one, I think Victor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You stole my thunder about the National Music Teacher Month. But you want to teach emotional learning? Music.
Amen.
Music is the only language that has the capacity to speak directly to the soul. And if we just focus on STEM, we're going to be a district walking around one giant Popeye arm and then one little, you know, we have to teach fine arts along because the capacity to teach innovation and to teach imagination, also teamwork, anything you can do in a sport, you can do, you can teach through arts, I guarantee it. Every instrument is a solo instrument. So you want to teach public speaking, have the student come up in their class. They should be playing for their peers anyways. So I think it's, right now, I'm not sure if the position exists. I haven't seen yet any of the breakdown structure, but the fact that we have an athletic director but not a fine arts director is a little weird.
Coordinator.
Yeah, coordinator right there.
That's the role.
Yeah, the coordinator.
That's the role of what you're looking for.
Gotcha, all right. I would be interested to be a little more, I guess, have some idea of what that is in the results part. Because you're right, I haven't seen any type of fine arts results that we're, that we're tracking, so thank you.
All right, Dr. Rupiah.
Think, what, well, there's nothing like rolling a presentation into the room and then sitting back and letting it go.
I'm watching.
Anyway, that's a good thing. That's a, that's a good, that's a good sound right here.
Yes, it is, it really is.
So, you know, most of you know, my son is, he's really into robotics and that sort of thing. His school starts at 8:45 in the morning. He is a 13-year, I'm sorry, a 14-year-old at the moment. And how many of you have teenagers that are breaking down your door early in the morning to get you to get them to school by 7:00, 7:15? So they can be engaged in robotics, in Project Lead the Way kind of content, and things like that, right? There's an excitement to go there. We have at, at one particular school, we have three teams, robotics teams, that are on their way to world championship in Dallas at the end of April, last week of April, beginning of May. We have fine arts teams, not teams, but like music, competition teams. We have fine arts teams, not teams, but like music, competition teams that have won championships. We've got a band at Battery Creek that is on its way to, well, it's planning its road, it's on the road next November, Thanksgiving, to the Chicago Parade. Again, that's my invitation. And there's so much more to do in the work of fine arts for our kids, because it is so complimentary to really fully developing individuals. And I think there is, I mean, that's the future, you know? Our robotics, one of the robotics teams, I don't know if you know this or not, but they, one of the things they do now is they find students, children, I'm sorry, they find children between three and four years old that have disabilities, and they retrofit these little battery-powered cars, and they work with a physical therapist, full disclosure, it's my wife. And, and, and it's an initiative they started, it's called Go Baby Go. And, and students with disabilities, they, they put harnesses in, build harnesses into these vehicles, reprogram the vehicles, so that instead of having to push a gas pedal, they can just hit a button on the steering wheel and it'll power the car. And they program a remote control so the parent can walk behind it, override the vehicle and control it and turn it and accelerate it and reverse it. It's pretty awesome, right? For children with disabilities, they've opened up a whole new world for, for these kids, and you should see their faces, but you should see their parents' faces, right? So those 21st century skills that businesses and the workforce are dying for are so essential that we want to make sure we're building and providing our kids with. You mentioned the fine arts, that's in the HASS component that Dr. Stratos was talking about. So we're trying to get there, and that's kind of what we're working towards and building in essence, the point of this presentation today. So I'll stop talking because I know any of you want to talk.
All right. Colonel Guyer, then Dr. Wozniowski.
I have the tale of two grandsons who have grown up in Beaufort County School District. Number one grandson graduated from Beaufort High two years ago, he's in his second year in the School of Engineering at Clemson. He's now taking a speech elective, he has, kind of one of the things he has to take. He is extremely challenged in that because he's never had the training or the introduction to public speaking, and that, he, he come to me, said, why, why didn't I take this in high school? Because I, you know, I am really having an issue with this. I said, well, Riley, you just got to, you got to work through it, you'll get through it in college. He said, I never knew how important that was. Second grandson gave his AP research oral presentation to his instructor, and she invited me to attend. He did a great job. His public speaking, he had down. He got that from his teacher, and I wish Riley would have taken that course. But then he had to also do it written. He had to write it up. And my son's an undergraduate English major, and he said, you wouldn't believe it. The grammar, the punctuation, the organization, how to write logically, quickly, wasn't there. And so he's now going through a homeschooling to get that. So project-based, wide view, we're so focused on hard math, hard reading, and not focused on the soft skills that they're going to need. And, and this is, this is not something that's been just going on lately, this has been around a long time. I've had, I've had lieutenants come to me right out of college who couldn't write, who were reading at a fourth and fifth grade level, and this is a serious problem, and I don't know how we're going to be able to structure. And, and your point is so right on about we are in a 16th century model in a 21st century world, and we've got to find a way to change that, or we're just going to spin our wheels. So I, I'm all for this. This is, this is great. This vision that you have is right on. It's right on. Now we've got to figure out the hard work of making it happen.
Dr. Wozniowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to try not to make Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Stratos' heads explode with my comment here. So we have some amazing choice offerings in Beaufort County, and that's, I'm a product of the school system here, but the point that Ingrid hit on and that a student who wants to take something that is within our system and already within our capabilities that they can't, that's unacceptable to me. We need to fix that, that's probably a conversation for another day, but I'm just going to make that point right now, that we have amazing magnet programs, cybersecurity, we're adding to them constantly, but yet these kids, not, the kids that might actually be passionate about it can't even get to it. So we need to fix that. My other comment, just in looking at the, the presentation, is I'd love for us to talk about CATE virtual options. I know that that's a big bursting area of exploration with virtual reality becoming so advanced, there's ways for students to conduct CATE classes virtually or in virtual reality whereby they can learn these skills and they don't have to go to an expensive lab or something like that, it's right there. Something else that I want to make sure I, I talk on, I know this was predominantly focused on the high school areas, I do worry, and I know that it's a fine line in terms of the younger age students with digital technology, that's something that I'm concerned about, and I think I've shared some different studies with you all in the past on that. I think we have to be careful about that and cognizant of how it could actually be detrimental to the learning of some children. Something that I'm just going to mention, if anybody gets a chance, an organization called Excel in Ed put out a collaborative, and does it annually, I believe, piece with a company called Burning Glass, and they look into market analysis of different types of CATE offerings and what is needed. And it's basically, they're doing the work for some of our CATE directors and letting you know, okay, this is where you should be directing your kids to learn these certain certification skills. And lastly, a lot of things that someone mentioned, kids on their phones and on social media and things like that, I think one of the things that is interesting to students is that there's influencers on there. There's people that they can look at and see their different ways of life, or they can, maybe, maybe they want to emulate them. One of the things that I enjoyed when I was in school was going to some of the different auditoriums and hearing from speakers, and I don't know how many of speakers we have that actually come and talk to kids these days, but if there was a way for us to make that live and in person in front of them, of people that are interesting and people that are doing cool things, not the Elon Musks of the world, because I'm sure he cost a lot to get here, but those kind of people, bring the influencers to their schools, and I don't mean the ones that are out there selling bikinis, I mean the ones that are doing things that are...
Expanding minds.
That are expanding minds, those people that, and to get to your point, Colonel Guyer, those people know how to get up in front of us on a stage and speak. And then that's, that's one of the things that, when I saw those people, I thought, how do I be able to do that? How do I do that? Oh, I take the debate class, and I did in high school, at Hilton Head High School. So I just, we have a lot of great offerings here, I'd like to open it up to other kids, and I think that we have a lot of knowledge here in this room that really is exciting for the future of the county. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, just, so I want to pick up on what Ms. Denae put down regarding the arts. I've seen the arts change the lives of children, and that is significant. That opportunity to be an individual as well as a team member does not happen often. Normally in sports, you're either a team player, if you're within a team, or you're an individual athlete. The arts lend you that opportunity to go into so many directions, and it's a language as well. So it takes your brain to a whole other level. To pick up on what Dr. Wozniowski shared, I do want to share where you're driving the bus with regard to accessibility for all students. On the dual enrollment component, we have approved CTE courses to be picked up virtually for this coming academic school year. That's something that had not happened in the past, it is going forward with TCL. I think that's important to share. Looking at the slide, when we're talking about virtual reality and augmented realities, I did, have been conducting, found research on metabias, some controversy on et cetera, et cetera. But that opportunity for students to see it, feel it, and taste it, the cost factor goes, so you're right on point where things in the brain are going. But with that as well as to take this type of technology to help it easier for our educators, that's the other part that I think we have to look at including, right? How do we develop lessons that address these needs and requirements within the resources that are established? So that's something, and just pitching out to the universe, to the creators and publishers in education, that's a positive thing we need to look at AI being utilized to help our educators. So I just thank you, though.
Mr. Smith?
Y'all have said a lot in terms of this topic. I'm not going to, I'm not going to recant some of that, but what I will say is that I think you, Dr. Stratos, because, because of the fact that I've been very passionate about the arts, that's one thing that I've talked about, that's how I know, because you and I have had that conversations, how, where was one point, I was knocking the ball, we were talking about creating, creating the, what the Beaufort County School looked like. So I, I, this, this is a, this is a, it's a, it's a good thing, but also that goes with it is, comes, when, when we make that and take that, we'll make the, and what decision that we make also comes with costs. And we have to be bold enough that when we get that, to stand behind that and understand that and process that and see what does that look like? You know, it's, it's good to be in the moment, but it's that after factor, it's just like, it's just like death, death, when death comes, everyone's there, but then when, after that, a week after that person's been married, everyone go away. So in the process of creating this and moving this forward, what I, what I, will we be willing and bold enough to put in action to actually make this happen? And how will we be able to give Dr. Stratos the resources to get this done once we put more on the plate to make, make these things happen? So that's just, that's just my food for thought that I would want to put out there to the board, that, you know, it's also, I mean, it's still different than that, that school we were talking about in terms of techn, of technology. This goes right along with this, so, that, that we've been talking about for months, so I'm definitely in line with it, but what are we willing to sacrifice to get this done, to give, to give to her, to make that happen?
Go ahead, and then I have to say something.
Yeah, just want to build on that. I don't think it's just looking at the board where we have to sacrifice. There's a rich, vast amount of resources within Beaufort County that we could tap on and build that so that we wouldn't have to give up in order to do. I, I just want to share that. But it does take that opportunity of planning, discussion, collaboration. It's not just myself, it's a result of all of us. I have to share that because, and there's a vast amount of resources, I, this county is willing to give and help grow.
So a couple...
There's a vast amount, it's not just, we're not just talking about, you know, monetary resources, we're talking about talent resources, like expertise, experience that exists. You know, you can look at the clock committee as an example of a piece of work. There is a vast array of experiences in that committee, and, and that committee is contributing to success of our referendum with their expertise and the commentaries they make and how they challenge our system, and, and they make us better.
Several things. So first of, first of all, you know, I'm all for innovation and teaching children the skills that they really need to survive and succeed in the, in the, in the workplace later on. And there are certain things that definitely every child needs, and it's, I agree, I think our, probably the educational system is, is a bit outdated in terms of the way it's organized and structured and whatnot, but there's still, I mean, how do you get to be a good writer? You read a lot, you write a lot. That's how you get to be a good writer, and you have to have a good teacher, and you have to learn the grammar. It's not like it just suddenly, you know, falls on your plate, and you're all of a sudden, you're, you're a good writer. I know years ago, when my kids went through the system, there was a big structure outside the system for outstanding musical opportunities. There was the Hilton Head Youth Orchestra that was really, really good. There were a number of private teachers in the community too, to teach the students that are particularly interested in it, but the kids typically started in like second grade in the elementary schools, learning the violin, and then they progress from there. So there were a lot of extra opportunities. I remember going to school and learning home ec. I'm sure they don't have that anymore, but I learned how to sew, use a pattern, make a skirt, take care of a baby, cook some chocolate chip cookies, I can remember what we did. But those were skills that were, you know, really important. You had to read a recipe, I mean, when you think about it, there's a lot more to that than just, you know, just baking or cooking or whatever. What I see as an issue is, I don't link today Dr. Rodriguez's results matrix to this program. I just think that's, that's putting a big burden on him. I mean, this is something, having been on the board now, this is my seventh year, and I wasn't, I've been involved with the results committee either as a member or involved just in interest, it's taken a lot to develop that rubric. It is huge amount of work, and it's also a huge amount of work for us to complete it every year, we all know that have done it. And I just don't see, you know, here we are, almost April, you know, that if we're going to start working on it and trying to modify it to include this, I, I just don't think that's really fair in the sense that, I don't know, maybe we need to have, to me, it's like two separate issues. Yes, I know somebody's going to say, well, no, if you measure it, then it's, you know, it's there, it's important. I don't, I think that's kind of jumping ahead to, we have to have a better plan. What are we going to try to accomplish? What are we, you know, what is the, what is the big picture? But to immediately punch that into the, I just think it's, I think we're jumping ahead for, for the, the matrix of, of his evaluation. Every year we've had to modify it because, one, they changed the state assessment, or two, they didn't give the state assessment, or now the state assessment is different. I mean, it's, it's had a ton of modification, and we're still not even using the original, original matrix because it's, it's, it's not exactly, it's not the same as it, the same as it was. So it's not been the same each year. So big, huge overhaul, I think, I'm not against that, but I just think it's, if you're going to do that, I think we have to have this other plan. What are, what are we asking him to do? You know, that's, that's, I'm just, it's a rhetorical question. I also think...
Ma'am?
Yeah, just a minute, please.
I'm sorry.
You know, I agree, arts, the fine arts are critical, they are so important, and it seems like we have those a little bit, almost on the back burner, or off to the side, or whatever word, or word you want to use, and can be so, so important for, for, you know, that's expression for some children that don't seem to really have another outlet, and then, and then there are also kids that, they love school, they love science, they love technology, and they love music. I mean, it just seems like it, it's really important, and, and maybe we have it more than I even realize, but it seems like it's different than when my children went through in the sense that I don't, I don't see the community, the high caliber community involvement that we used to have. And there was one particular violin teacher in the area that was fabulous, and I think she probably drove a lot of it. So those are my comments. Is there anybody who hasn't spoken who would like to speak? Oh, yes, Carlton, sorry. Go ahead. Thank you. Go ahead.
Is that, okay, so I think this is a wonderful conversation and one that is necessary. I think it is a monumental undertaking, and I think to modify the results at this point could really sort of compress it to almost being maybe not the best method, but I... But I do think it needs to be elevated to strategically. What type of student are we trying to turn out in the Beaufort County School District? But let me go through some things and I'll be very brief. The one first is project learning is absolutely necessary. Modern day American kids are at a deficit. Their interpersonal skills are lacking, their communication skills are lacking. They have been so screen bound that the ability to interact is not a proficiency. And having worked abroad, I can tell you that other cultures still focus on STEM. They use the art as an interpersonal enhancement. I myself have had courses in high school and college in art history, architectural history, music. God knows I can never play any instrument. But what it does, when you are interacting with someone who has that interest, you now can hold a conversation which gives you credibility and influence. So project learning forces people to collaborate. I think our kids need that as a requirement. I just mentioned soft skills and interpersonal skills. I guess the other thing is, I think we have to approach how do we inform society? That birth, I mean, learning starts from birth to five. And in two presentations in the last three weeks when I've been researching this, I have been shocked to learn that the human brain at birth is 25% developed. At three years of age, I've seen two different presentations. One says that it's 75% developed at age of three, the other says it's 80%. The, uh, both of those presentations also say that by age five, the human brain is 90% developed. So if we're talking about high school or two layers, though my course would have been consistently been, we have to take this message aggressively into the community. So modern day parents understand they have a huge role to play in their kids understanding what's going to make them successful on the global stage, not parochial stage, not the North Carolina or South Carolina stage. Because Asia and South Asia are absolutely moving forward. And if you look at who leads the company, I mean, it's amazing when you look at Silicon Valley. Look at the names of who is actually leading the company. I mean, it's, it's, it's just amazing to me. So the other thing is, there's a Finnish doctor, PhD name, Tare, I can't remember his last name. He had completed a meta-analysis, wrote all these different statistical studies up. And he said that actually we need, and I saw this in a presentation Beaufort County School District made as well, because they aren't evolving what they have said in their raise on death return to education. And it's rather than having so much real feature-led instruction between that birth to five and 3K and K and what have you, it needs more development time. And honestly, little architects who are, is group that's sort of doing the design of Hilton Head School, we have the referendum passes, they've already incorporated self-learning time, group of collaboration into the proposed structure that they, they are sharing with us. So I think that becomes really important. And now I'll give you a little anecdotal one. In working and living abroad and having to manage STEM and technical engineers and geologists, physicists, which I'm not, the thing that would always impress me is that when it comes to STEM, we have some great schools. But I can tell you that in terms of this formula and solving a problem, schools in Africa, Asia, I had never heard of. Just in the simple mathematical abilities and problem solving. They were competitive with the engineers I had from MIT, Northwestern, Caltech. Where they suffered was they would not offer a suggestion if the leader did not ask and that culture. So I think the softer skills are so important to help our millennials, Gen Z, and conscious students understand you can be an ironclad and you can really be professional. But if you're going to continue to ascend in a leadership structure, you're gonna have to be able to manage the human portion of that. So I think this is a great topic. I think we should devote a year or so to it so that we really can drive and understand and develop it for regular coming out of it. Thank you very much.
May I just, go ahead. For full disclosure and for transparency, I did not prepare this presentation for the superintendent's evaluation. I have to put that out there. And I mean that respectfully to everybody in the room. I know it would be a question that came up, but it was, this is just for thinking.
Ingrid?
I think we're conflating the superintendent evaluation and the results section of coherent governance. And I did some research on this. Coherent governance result is what's supposed to drive the work we do as the board. So all our operational expectations, and I've read both coherent governance books. And I went to the little session we had. We're supposed to lay out for the district what we expect the superintendent to be working towards. From that, we will derive, we, it doesn't mean we have to change the current rubric or his thing. It may come that as a result of these conversations in result committee, we find other ways that we want to add into a valuerate. But I'm just gonna give you an example, and I'm limited because I don't have internet, it's killing me. The Fairfax County uses coherent governance and they have a results section. And the first result is the mission. And I could not pull up our results section, but I know it's personalized learning to global. Someone might be able to find it written, is it written on our agenda? It might be on our agenda.
No, I have it with me.
Okay, so, yeah, read, read the mission statement of Beaufort County School District.
I know I have it right here.
And then I have a couple other things. Well, I'll tell you, so we'll get back to the mission. Here's the other thing, okay, go ahead.
The mission statement is that Beaufort County School District, through a personalized learning approach, will prepare graduates who compete and succeed in an ever-changing global society and career marketplace.
Which sounds exactly like the conversations we just started here. So that's result number one for Fairfax County. Result number two is academics. Achieve the full academic potential in core disciplines, which is what we already have, right? Reading, writing, math, science, social studies. Communicate in at least two languages. Explore, understand, and value the fine and practical arts. Understand the interrelationship and interdependence of countries and cultures in the world. Effectively use technology to access, communicate, and apply knowledge and to foster creativity. Result number three is essential life skills. We're talking about soft skills, how we interact, take responsibility for our actions, grit, perseverance. Be able to contribute effectively within a group dynamic. We go to collaboration. Our result number four is responsibility to the community. So that is what I think coherent governance envisioned for our results. Or what's our mission? What are we trying, what does, what does success look like? If we were to walk away from the school board and say, wow, this, this district's a success, what does it look like? I think right now what we have in our results is tied to his evaluation into this rubric, which we got from, I think, Michigan State School Board Association. And it's fairly adequate. I'm not, I'm not advising we change it, but there's nowhere, this is where we need to have these conversations. And these are the kind of conversations that make me kind of wanna jump around across the desk and start talking to Victor and get Angela to come back to the classroom and start teaching, you know? Those are the kind of things that, and I think it will be energizing to the public to hear these things and to hear that the board cares about arts education, that we care about STEM, and we care about project-based learning, and we care about what K programs are available to students. I think it'll be increased parent engagement as we get ready to go into a referendum where we're asking for, you know, even though it's gonna be tax new strip, we're still gonna be putting a fairly large dollar number on that. But we wanna show them, like, look at the cool stuff we are working on here at Beaufort County School District. So I would like to separate out, the results committee is already formed. It's already ready to go. I think it's me, Chloe Gordon, and Elizabeth Hay, if I'm not mistaken. Let's use us to start, let's start having some conversations, figure out how we can format it so we don't spend three hours here in a board meeting. We'll bring stuff up to another work session, we'll continue to refine it. But let's come up with some, some more frequent, ambitious, measurable, and transparent results that we can take to the community. And if out of that organically grows some things we wanna tweak or change with the superintendent's evaluation, that will have to come before the board. But I don't think that, it should be, let's develop our results, then let's look at the superintendent evaluation rather than strictly tying results to superintendent evaluation.
You haven't spoken, have you?
You know, I sit here and I listen to the discussion and, um, and I look at other countries, how they educate their children. But in the United States, education politicized so much until it, it, it's just, to me, it doesn't matter what program we put in place, because legislators, they're trying to, trying to tell us what, what the teacher should teach. And that's not their job. Their job is to fund education. The educator should make the decision of what is taught in school. And that is the reason why, and that is, and that is the reason why other countries are, are ahead of us because they don't, the politician don't tell them what to teach the schools. You know? And, and the thing about it is, when we talk about all these different programs, many of the times, we are talking about certain kids. We're not talking about the whole population of this county. You know? So, you know, I don't know. For me, you know, all my children are out of school, my grandsons are out of school, and they got a good education, very good education. Thank you.
Carlton?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to follow up. I think that was a member, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
That, that's a point that I had Chris Dallas mentioned a few minutes ago. But I think what we intend to produce should be demand-driven. So if you look at where the jobs are and we modify more to meet that need over the next 10 to 15 years, I think our educational curriculum will be extremely, extremely relevant. And that's what other countries have done. So in Germany, they have a very intense CTE program where people are identified in middle school. And so they just spend the next few years through CTE programs and apprenticeships. And when they come out, they are absolutely superb craft people or tradespeople or what have you. And they make a heck of a good list. And so that satisfies that demand. I see art, the softer skills, the courses that I remember mentioning that I had spoken about, that I take personally. I see those as helping a person develop better leadership. And one of the things that we did when we were looking at creating the community career ventures we for years at Hilton Head and said, where are the jobs? And if that will be a precursor to where we sort of direct the school district, I think that would be very telling. What are the jobs with one of the median salaries? Feel entertained and addressed, the softer skills, because those are important and our kids currently are definitely lacking those. And then I think, I, I again say, I think this is a huge undertaking, strategic, fundamental. And I think we should take the time. I have no problem asking the results committee to move forward. I would suggest that we wait until, until that output has come and the board has probably had a work session to go through it in detail. And then we can take a look at what are the results. When it comes to results, it's very important that as a leadership group, we don't micromanage. That we say, here are the high-level results. Every exact end result, imagine the system I've been a part of, say, limit your metrics to three to five. And then you challenge your leadership to develop anything they feel is appropriate to move the organization to achieve those results, which is the system we're not coherent managing. But that's all I just wanted to share. Thank you, Madam.
So I couldn't agree with you more, Carlton. It's an enormous undertaking. Can you please display the motion again? So this motion says that we're gonna direct the results committee to review and expand the results for academic achievement. So this is now, to me, that's, I, I'm not gonna support this because it looks like we're taking it away from the board. And it really, to me, should be a strategic, uh, well-thought-out plan that's gonna take quite a long time. And it seems like our educators should be the ones perhaps to, to lead it with, with input from results. But I just think, I, I'm all for innovative learning and, and taking a different path, but I don't, I don't think I can support that. Dr. Wosniewski?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion. My amendment is to state, motion to direct the results committee to review and report back to the full board, potential expansion.
Seconded me.
That way, and the intent of this is that the committee, at the committee level, they'll investigate, they'll look into it, they'll potentially find some places for expansion, and then that will be presented to the full board for review.
I'm much more comfortable with that.
These days, I'm gonna get a motion passed, Dr. Wosniewski.
For new board members who, who aren't aware, committees don't have authority to really expand anything on their own anyways. It would have to come to the full board for us to vote on any type of changes.
Unless we give them that authority. And that almost gave them that authority. That's okay. And I don't think it was intended that way.
No, no, and I did say that we would make recommendations, bring it to the board, just kind of give some... So I'm very happy, although one day, I'm telling you, it's gonna happen. I'm gonna get a motion, Dr. Wosniewski's not gonna amend it, it's gonna pass. It's gonna be a whole thing of events. So she's, I got a motion.
To the full board.
Potential expansion of, potential expansion of the results. She don't have internet, I actually changed her original motion, so you're not going to be able to see this. And I go back into board documents.
Can you make that little maker? Oh.
Isn't it, I'm okay with the amendment? Can't we just, we don't have to vote on it separately, we can just vote?
Yeah, amendment. Who seconded this?
Well, I agree.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Ms. Popeye. Would you entertain the idea of there being a work session specifically devoted to the full review of the research? And we can have a long, detailed discussion to align all members?
Yeah, actually, that was sort of, I had kind of mentioned that, that we would bring this framework and some discussion and some data and some ideas to the board for a work session. And I think that would be a great idea.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Smith?
In lieu of, in lieu of the work session, I think that it would be a good diligence to allow them to start that work prior to coming to the work session with that results. Just from my prior experience, Mr. Dallas, I think, I think that it would be good for them to start off at the actual, at the actual committee level and then to bring it to the full board. So, yeah, yeah, I just, but, but I'll need just to say, yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that. And then also, I was gonna say that I definitely think this is a good, it's a, it's a, it's a good start because, you know, just even being in, in the business of teaching kids. And I, I remember a couple of years ago, there was a, there was a kid who liked to rap. And, you know, the arts is, is a big thing because for some kids, this is their only outlet. I'm going to a firm on Sunday, a former student of ours from Right Choices. He loved, he loved to rap. His hair could have been one of his outlets through the arts to make it out. Or as, as we, as some of us say, to make, to make it out or to enhance some of his skills. So this is, I, I, kudos to the board. I think this is a big forward movement, this is a big step moving forward. Thank you.
And if I could respond, I absolutely agree. My, my understanding was that the review, the results committee would do some work, produce some data, then come back. So I'm, I'm agreeing with that.
And I'm gonna call the question, but I would like to say, Mike, I started this. I'm just so excited by the opportunity to have the conversations. That's, I'm not looking to make anything, I just, I love the conversation. I love everything I've heard, I'm just very energized. And I'm calling the question.
Now we have to vote then. We're, I think we're, the discussion's ended. All right, so all those in favor of the motion to direct the results committee to review and report back to the full board, potential expansion of the results for academic achievement? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye?
Aye.
And Ms. Hay? I think she's not there. Okay. All right, any nays? Okay. And abstentions? So the motion carries... So the motion carries, uh, let's see, nine?
Nine, one.
And zero.
I got it, Pat, I didn't get the task to amend it, but I'm getting closer. Okay.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Stratos.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, um, Robbins informed me, since our internet's still not working well, we're, we're not gonna have the new board docs platform training, it's not possible today. So the next topic is update on the status of the south of, the, south of the broad board meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Quads. I know that, um, you know, we've seen a couple of emails from some constituents along the way about requesting meetings, uh, south of the broad again, and, and we know that's a goal for the board, but I just wanna clarify for anybody who might be listening today or come back and listen to a copy of it, but in December, we received a letter from the county that let us know that they were exercising a clause in the contract that allowed either party to exit that contract. Uh, and that was the contract that we have with the county channel and the, and the county to broadcast our meetings and to host, uh, host our meetings on their site. Um, so they, they exited the contract, they, they gave us a 30-day notice, like they were required to do, uh, and, uh, and they stopped broadcasting our meetings. In order for us to continue, uh, with our meetings, that's why we've been having them here, where we have the arrangement and the setup to broadcast and to, and to record our meetings. Uh, so consequently, um, that's the reason we've had the meetings here at the district office. I've had a couple of meetings with Eric Greenway, our county administrator, and he let me know that they would resume the coverage of our meetings again, okay? So they, they will be doing that. Uh, they are in the process of, uh, I think, purchasing some additional equipment or making some changes. At any rate, uh, they are planning to begin that coverage again in May. Uh, and so, uh, I was checking in to see the availability of April for, for the meetings to begin down there. So their library, uh, I guess, room is not gonna be available for that while they're adjusting. So, okay. Um, I, I had spoke with Ms. Cushionberry, who connected with their staff, and that's what she's been informed. So, uh, May is when they plan to resume coverage of the meetings. I believe in May, we have, uh, the first meeting in May is, uh, uh, of course, scheduled here, as it always is. And then, is there a work session in May?
Graduation.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Graduation.
Uh, we, June.
I thought we said not to have a meeting in May.
There's.
The next one's April 21st.
Yeah. Do we have, uh, are there two meetings that are scheduled in May?
Yes, sir. May 2nd is scheduled here, and then the next one would be May 16th, that we would have south of the broad.
So it looks like we would be able to resume in May, uh, south of the broad. We will stay in touch with the county channel, uh, just to, uh, just to see, you know, the status and where they are, uh, but, but that's their plan. And they are willing to, to resume coverage of meetings for us.
Dr. Wozneski.
Just a procedural question. Since they canceled the previous contract, does the board need to approve a new one? Do you have executive authority under that?
We, we will work on, on another MOU.
Okay.
No, I called them MOU in Florida, M.O.A., uh, same thing, uh, for, for this. And we, and the intent is to resume the existing MOA.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Smith? Um, I'm. Just, oh, hold on. Okay, Carlton, I'll call you just a second.
Good, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead, I'll call on you.
Um, just, excuse me, I apologize if I did, if I did miss something, but, so what was the update with USC?
With USCB?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so we were working with USCB in order to try to get that accomplished, but, um, we were, in essence, those, those communications have gone off. I think they were relying, in order to accomplish it, they would have to rely on students in order to participate on that, and, and so there may have been some concern about consistency, and, and, and you need consistency, you know, uh, as, as you move forward on this, so.
Carlton?
Yeah, I would just, um, um, like to say that regarding the USCB, another organization we're a member of actually has been using them, and the technological challenges have been lacking. So if the talent can take it again, that would be great, but would we try to get a, an agreement that doesn't allow them to, you know, unilaterally act?
We can look at that. I think our board in the past has always liked the, uh, the clause in there of the 30-day for, for whatever reason, uh, and, and that typically goes both ways, so, so we, we can, we can look at that. Mr. Dallas?
Yeah, I would, I would ask that, that we've been, we've been fried and scrambled, and so we'd like something of 60 or 75-day.
Got it.
Action clause for the agreement by the second party as well, which would be up for them if we were one day.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does that conclude your update?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you kindly. All right, next up, we have a donation, and Madam Secretary?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the donation from Jamie Harrison in the amount of $5,000 to H. Cracker Middle School for supplies and shirts.
Excellent.
And may I add something?
Yes.
Please, for the record, Ms. Harrison is making this donation in remembrance and memory of Aiden Harrison. He was a student at Bluffton High, a freshman. He suddenly passed away in 2021. So thank you, Ms. Harrison, we greatly appreciate it.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, unanimous. And thank you again, Ms. Jamie Harrison, for your very generous donation, and we express our deepest sympathy to you on the loss of your child. Next, we have some announcements. I'll let Ingrid, you go first with your National Music Month.
Maybe I should pitch it to Victor N. Yes, so I, uh, this month is winding up, it is National Music Educator Month, and so I wanted to call out, uh, the educators that made a difference in my family's life and the importance of music education, that we will continue to press for that here at the school board. Thank you.
I would like to remind the, um, board members to file their South Carolina Statement of Economic Interest with the Ethics Commission, uh, no later than, I think it's noon on March 30, 2023, and that is fast approaching. We also have in your packet today a flyer, um, about a community forum on child and adolescent mental health and wellness that's being, uh, looks like, uh, held at Bluffton High School at 6:00 PM on Monday, March 27th. There are, uh, there is registration and light refreshments beginning at 5:30 that evening, and the featured speakers are Medical University of South Carolina, Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Sciences, Dr. Anna Kirkland, and Dr. Alexis Garcia. Garcia, excuse me. Um, it looks like it's a, a great program, and all are welcome, and that, there is no, um, uh, registration, uh, fee for the program. Do you have any, yeah, Dr.?
Yeah, I just wanna piggyback on that because yesterday, uh, we met with two consultants that the, uh, county council has regarding the settlement, uh, on opioid and, and challenges with opioid addictions, and, uh, the individuals who are, uh, running that forum that you're speaking about, uh, we're, we're going to connect them, uh, and, and I think it's an important connection because they wanna do education, uh, with schools and students around the impact of opioids and other things like that. So, so, uh, I think there's opportunity for three different groups to come together here, the school district, the council, the county council, uh, and this, this, uh, uh, organization locally that connects with our students and schools in order to sort of path forward in, in providing some really important education for kids on the impact of opioids and other, other drugs.
All right.
Um, Madam.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, just wanted to, to share that we were in a meeting this past week where town manager was talking about engaging, um, the key institutions, and that town manager's in support of, of reaching forward and, and has a very high opinion of Beaufort County School District and Dr. Rodriguez and the board, and looking at the teacher recognition program that that particular municipality would, would consider. So I think, just to share that, I think that's a very good outcome, and maybe that can spread.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Okay, one, uh, final announcement for me, and then I'll be quiet. Um, this week, there was a second annual, uh, cybersecurity summit that was held here locally in Beaufort, and, um, there were several, uh, members of our community and groups that sponsored Beaufort County School District students. We had, uh, 20 students in attendance, uh, and it was just, I think, great exposure for students, uh, high school students around the workforce that's ahead, opportunities within cybersecurity. Uh, and so, uh, it was just a great experience for, for our students. Thank the sponsors and thanks, thanks for the, uh, thank the, uh, South Coast cybersecurity for the, uh, for the summit. Well done.
All right, I think that concludes our announcements, and we can adjourn by unanimous consent. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Bye, Carlton.
Bye, Carlton.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.